You don't need to be sorry.
Okay. We're in. You're okay.
Since we don't have any public here much, would you be able to give the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right.
They're all the same cookies. So I don't have to eat them eight during the night.
I'm not going to be eating this. I have to just say no.
To anyone.
Why?
Grateful it's not a talk.
It just seems silly.
Hi, Harold.
I don't eat breakfast, so I can just work a little bit here and there.
That's where you do the intermittent fasting approach.
Seems to work. So help me if it's a severed gut. Where did that come from? So help me if it's a severed gut. You know, Wayne, if you're not careful.
He was on the way. Well, we'll go ahead and get started.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started tonight. Welcome everyone to our city council meeting here held on Monday, May 2nd, 2022. Welcome here to our city chambers. We are going to be conducting just a regular session tonight with myself, Mayor Carolyn Lundberg, conducting. And we will begin with an invocation by Councilmember Randy Powell, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Daryl Magelby.
My dear gracious heavenly father, we gathered together this day with humble hearts and grateful hearts for the opportunity to meet as citizens and residents and officials and staff members of this great city. We are grateful to be here amongst this, the great resources of this valley and among such good people. We are humbled by the privilege of being able to conduct business in this wonderful city, and we pray that thy spirit might be with us as we counsel together and weigh these decisions and items on our agenda this night. We are grateful for those who serve and protect us in this area, and we pray for a blessing of safety and peace upon them. We are aware, Father, of the contention in this world of the infringement of people's peace and freedoms. We ask that, if at all possible, that they be relieved from those sufferings and that we as fellow brothers and sisters in this world will be able to find ways to establish peace and good rapport amongst ourselves that might be able to spread across this earth. Can we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ's name? Amen.
Amen.
Pete, after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Randy and Daryl. We will now start with our call to order and have a roll call here.
Van Broderick, present.
Randy Powell, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Daryl Magelby, present.
Mike Van Cherry, present.
And Councilmember Hoyt, I understand, is on the way, so we'll have him noted for attendance when he steps in. Item number two is presentations and announcements. We have, I guess we'll go to announcements. I have a really exciting announcement. I just received this a few moments ago before coming into the meeting. From the, on behalf of the Utah Office of Outdoor Recreation and the Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant Advisory Committee, it is our pleasure to inform you that a recreation restoration infrastructure grant to Linden City in the amount of $110,447 has been approved for the Linden City Horse Arena improvements.
All right, cool.
That will, that's wonderful news. Are there any other announcements? We will have council reports in a moment. Okay, so we will go ahead. We have a really special employee recognition award tonight. Let's see, are we, we're not ready to do that quite yet. Okay, we'll circle back to that, no problem. Okay. Item number three, this is where we may have open session for public comment if there is anything here that someone would like to address the council on that is not listed on the agenda. And if you do have something for open session public comment, please, we invite you to come up here and sit at the table, state your name.
Hello, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Maxine Smith. Do you need my address?
We're good. We're good, Maxine.
I come and I'm glad that we had this money for the horse trail. It brings good money, or good memories about how the Linden arena become. And maybe some of you know, if you've been down there and rode, but years ago, men in Linden, like George Hardman, Rex Richens, Keach and others, got together, worked and raised money for the lumber and built the arena with an agreement with the city that they could build the arena and use it on a 99-year lease. And so I was glad to see it is using. Every time I go down, I can see somebody using it. It's in good use. As years went on, the wood deteriorated as bucking shoots and announcer stand would. And as president of the riding club, I worked with Mayor Ken McMillan and rebuilt the arena again and the riding club. And we had a junior riding club, and it was fun. If you've ever known Kurt, Brian Walker, Gary Taylor, I think he still works for the city. And so we had the junior riding club, and eventually it turned into the 4H with more opportunity. And so we ended up rebuilding the arena and to the, what it is today. With my daughters active in 4H and FFA, they repainted it as years went on. So we have some good memories about the arena and how it come to be and the 99-year lease. Thanks for letting me tell you history. I love it. I have come to the city last year and tried to, we've all tried at our house to live by the ordinance system in Linden City. That's why we sold the ground that had been in our family for four generations and moved down to where we presently live. We built that home and, like we said, it was on a right-of-way. We talked about this as you approved an apartment on that right-of-way that has six D's on that 16-foot right-of-way. But anyhow, it turned out that when the city put the sewer system in, they sent out a letter. I provided a copy of that letter and the down payment. Existing homes built had a $250 sewer connection fee. And again, you had not furnished a road in there for that home. And so we paid a $25 out of that 250 to show the, in good friendship, that we were there, but you had not finished furnished the road. So as it went on, to address that issue in 2019, my daughter lives in that house and had to connect to the sewer. And at this time now, a road had been put in. And I furnished Adam a copy of the letter that was sent out and a copy of the receipt with Norma Taylor's initials on it. And he left a message on my phone that he couldn't honor that. He couldn't find that there was any original papers, that he didn't think mine was an original. Because when you move from Lakeview Road up to here, those old papers were burnt out in back. I know because my husband was an employer for Linden City. And so he left it, that he couldn't prove my papers were really authentic. And he said, with the cost of living, the inflation, that he couldn't honor it. So they charged my daughter the high-going price. And I felt like, why? That's never been addressed. It should have been addressed that it was an existing home and that they could have just connected for a couple hundred dollars over $3,000. So that issue is outstanding. It's never been addressed. The other issue is my sidewalk that I came and talked to. I paid for that in May of 95, and it still hasn't been put in. I'm asking that it would, that the city will go ahead and put that in. It's been paid for, and I've waited for it. The last problem is that on my fence line, the neat thing, my west property is where the old Arm in Urban Railroad went. And so we have that old history there, but we also have the history that that is the hardpan for the underground river that is in Linden. So on my west boundary, every since it was Heritage Farm went into development. But we were never notified by the developer in person or in letter, nor by the city. And the dirt is constantly hauled away. I've had, I, Gary Holgard, Ben Wagner, Phil Brown come right to the place as they was going down another four to five feet. And hauling it off and the problems. It's still not addressed. And last year, I called and Adam sent down Phil to talk to the south end of my property. And because they were cutting away and hauling it away again. Well, they were taking off a mine which is many feet, needs a retaining wall and four or five inches on Don Peterson. The only thing that was ever addressed on that, taking away that dirt again last year, was the small amount was put back on Don's, Long Don's property. I have over 300 feet on that west property line that goes anywhere from probably at least four feet to over 12 feet. It needs that retaining wall. City ordinance says it also needed a fence. And I, at this point, can't even walk. We have two and three fences put up to keep the large animals from caving off. I can't even go where they hauled the dirt away last year to that end to clean out the weeds and use my own property that's in my deed. Will the city put in that retaining wall and fence that I need to retain my property and my animals? Would you please address those issues of my sidewalk? I don't know what you'd ever do about the sewer connection at this point, but we did make a payment in good favor there. But I do need that west. Last year, I cut weeds because I can no longer mow it on the back or anything and hauled away three loads on a four-foot, 14-foot trailer to the dump. It is with linquist. It is, I don't know how to put this very positively, but it needs to be cleaned up. It's a fire hazard, and if that takes off with that property and weeds on the west side, I'll lose my barn issues. And if you have a question about it, you can ask the police officers that come to my house five and six times a year to take the raccoons and the trash that is buildup from this lot. Please help me with the west side of my property.
All right, Maxine. Wow, that's a lot.
Well.
But, but here we go.
Go ahead.
So in regard to the sidewalk, fortunately, we have a lot of our staff here. My understanding was that to understand how that cul-de-sac may finish out, they needed to know how the elevations and the engineering might need to go to do that properly. Do we have an update on that by chance with the Mar?
His development is on the south end, not the north where I live.
Is there?
Mayor, what I think would be beneficial if we reached out to Maxine and had a meeting with you and we can go through these issues again. And it's been a couple of years, I think, since, since you brought up a few of these items.
I was here last year.
Yeah, so let us, let us reach out and call you. We'll set up a meeting with our engineer and talk about that. But I, to put us on the spot and have correct information is, is a hard thing, and so.
Would that, would that be all right if we, it sounds like it would need more discussion than we have here at this moment.
Call you in the next couple of days, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
And the big problem of that west retaining wall and fence, it sounds like.
Okay.
And we can go through those discussions again and, and look at what we've already informed you. I, I don't know if that's changed since the last time we've addressed it, and so.
Well, you haven't really.
There, there may not be a solution that you're happy with, Maxine. I'm sorry to say that, but that, that's how it is right now from what my recollection is. We are, we are unable to do what you would like to see done on behalf of the city.
With the development of that property and mine is still agriculture, I do not have $100,000 to put in a retaining wall, backfill and a fence.
I understand that, so we will.
All per made profit. I did not make anything.
We'll call you and discuss those items.
All right, let's get together at a time that this could be fleshed out and, and.
Soon that it can be taken.
Adam said he'll get, he'll reach out to you this week.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, so that is part of our open session, public comment. Seen none other at this time. We'll go back and we'd like to recognize Officer Barlow. We have a special presentation recognition award for him.
Hey, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor.
My pleasure, thank you. Matt wasn't able to join us, I'm feeling like we're standing in a funny spot here.
You're good, you're good.
So Matt wasn't able to join us last council meeting. We actually recognized Officer Sanchez as well, and we're catching up. We missed a quarter here and then had some really cool comments. Let me read one of these that came in from a fellow employee. Sergeant Barlow is outgoing, friendly and approachable. I've heard two different citizens in the last few months, months, mention interactions they've had with Sergeant Barlow, who responded to calls for service. They mentioned his friendly and helpful demeanor. I recall years ago seeing a picture of Officer Barlow in uniform on a cold snowy night under a private vehicle helping someone with car troubles. This seems typical of his willingness to assist people in their time of need. I'm thankful Matt is on our team. There's a couple of other really nice comments. We wanted to present you with a $50 gift certificate and copy those comments again and thankful very much for your awesome work here.
Thank you.
Well deserved, well deserved. Try not to spend that $50 all at once. How long have you been with us, Matt?
What's that?
How many years have you been with Linden?
I came over in 2008, and I was with Pleasant Grove and Linden since 2002.
That's what I thought. It's been a long time. That's great. You did a great job. Yep. Had a resident tell me how appreciative she was of you helping her reprogram her garage door.
Oh, yeah. She was pretty worried.
Thank you again for going above and beyond. We so appreciate it. All right, item number four is council reports. Let's see.
Just for the minutes, for the record, since we had on our agenda, there was this recognition of this 2021 and 22 education grants.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, we're.
And we had some miscommunication there, and so we'll get to that in a future meeting, so.
Correct. All right, made note of that. Okay, council reports. Who wants to kick it off here? Mike, you're looking at me. Tag your it.
Thank you. We've mentioned this briefly. As far as the North Point Solid Waste Special Services District, right now, we are charging our member cities tipping fees of $30.50 a ton, which we haven't changed for, for at least three years that I'm aware of, since I've been on the board. We received a, a notice of increase from MBI, our municipal solid waste carrier and our C and D carrier, which totaled about $250,000, which was representative of the inflation factor and fuel surcharges and so forth, which is certainly understandable. As a result of that, after numerous meetings and discussions and a little bit painfully, we determined that a dollar a ton increase would be in order $31.50, which is still well below what others outside of the district are paying. And what that does is that basically keeps us even, so we're not losing money. We've talked to every, well, between Neil Swindon and the director and myself, we've spoken to most of the mayors and/or city administrators. And for example, just to give you an idea, a $1 a ton increase for Linden amounted to about $4,200. It was nominal. Large cities like Orem, it ended up being about a little over $40,000. So no one has vehemently, no one has really uttered a peep, other than Orem mentioned that there might be some political machinations that, some ramifications because they were already raised rates, but I'm thinking they could easily absorb that anyway. So with that in mind, they're holding a public hearing tonight, which we're required to do, which I doubt seriously anyone will visit or come to. But that will be officially voted on tonight by the board, so that's just more along the lines of information. So thank you. I mentioned, well, I think I did mention this, a nice couple that sat next to me, one of the nice couples at the breakfast the other morning. I think they're Carters, I think they're named, on the corner of Lakeview and I think it's Fourth West, I believe it, where the old city hall used to be. Right on the corner is a huge bush of some kind. Mike Florence told me what it was, and I couldn't remember it. But it, I would have looked, and it truly does obstruct the view when someone's coming off of Fourth West, turning onto Lakeview, especially at a right turn or turning left off of Lakeview. It totally obscures the vision of drivers, and they were concerned about that. So I got with Mike, and Mike recognized immediately what I was talking about. He was aware of it. And maybe you can just give me, was there anything you're aware of that?
Yeah, so Mike's obviously not here, but I went and took pictures of that today because I have people for enforcement. And I'm planning on writing a letter to the APR, probably, to that, the owner of that, the owner of that property. And hopefully it'll be cleared up.
Yeah, the sense is that there's not going to be an issue with it. It's just I was, I was grateful that they were willing to reach out. You know, usually when you ask someone, is there anything we can do for you? Is there anything you need? They usually go, no, we're okay. But since they mentioned that, I thought it was worth mentioning to you folks. We haven't, we haven't met since St. George, have we? Yes, we did like one time. What is today? What is today?
We haven't had a council meeting.
May 2nd.
First council meeting. We had the general plan meeting.
That's right. We had a general plan meeting. Well, it was thoroughly enjoyable, learned a lot, especially about the secondary water issues. And so I was grateful for that opportunity to attend down there. And our general plan meeting, it was well-attended, and I thought some good things came out of it, some good ideas. And I think as time goes on, that will even be more of the case as people solidify their thoughts and ideas. I think it'll be very beneficial to the city, so that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Mike. Last, is it Monday? Last week, we had the Linden Arbor Days celebration at the park. We had 150-plus people in attendance there. It was a bit chilly, but it was a wonderful evening. There were a lot of door prizes. I bet we give out $10 million worth of door prizes, it seemed like. It just went forever. George Rowan and the committee really scoured the community for gift cards, and there were a lot of drawings that came from the youth, and there were some prizes for them. And it was just an enjoyable evening, and I'm grateful to be a part of that and participate there that evening. I did send pictures to everyone and to have that. And we met this last week for Linden Days in planning in regards to that. And the committee is a great group of employees, and I'm grateful to work with them. And there's a couple of things they're twining with doing different. One is on the Sunday, that first Sunday, they're thinking about doing a concert in this park right here. It'll just be an hour and a half, two-hour concert. There's, they've got a group that wants to do it, and that'll probably be added to the, the list of things that citizens can participate in. One thing they would like the council to do on the car show, I don't know how many of you go to the car show on that Monday evening, but in the past, we've given hats out to all of those who participated with a car. And we want to make it more official and, and, and show gratitude towards them, because if it wasn't for them coming, we wouldn't have a car show. And they'd like the council to help with passing those hats out to each of the, those car applicants. So we'll get those, and then hopefully we can all meet up and kind of decide how we want to do that, that evening. I'm excited about what they're doing, and a lot of the things are going to be traditional and moving forward. And we will continue to meet, and if you have any recommendations, let, give that to me, and we'll pass that on. That's all I have.
All right, thank you so much, Daryl. Yeah, the Arbor Day was great. I popped in. I could only be there for a quick five minutes because there was another event I had to get to. But staff was cooking hot dogs as fast as they could get them off the grill, and Little Miss Linden were there serving and doing a really great job as well. So appreciate all that they do to help us. You're holding an Arbor Day as part of what helps us qualify to be a Tree City USA. And again, the volunteer committee that does that does a great job. Really quickly, we had our, our social with the other elected officials of Cedar Hills and Pleasant Grove, and hosted by Mayor Frost of American Fork. That was a really helpful meeting to kind of meet with our other sister cities elected officials, talk about some of the shared issues that we're all facing and how, how we can address those and build good relationships there. And then also the General Plan Committee meeting and the, the new commercial design standard, looking at those to update. We've got some great people on board. Want to thank our staff that's working really hard on that and helping guide that process and the citizens that are involved in that, as well as the Planning Commission and all of you here on the council. Thank you so much. League of Cities and Towns, always super informative, always really very positive thing to go to, to understand what just came out of the legislative session at the state, what might be coming next, as well as just kind of understanding best practices. It's always great to rub shoulders. Hopefully you all are, you know, we all learn a lot and then have good opportunities for people that we can talk to that have had some similar issues in their communities as well. Just a couple of things to point out. Coming up this next Saturday is our Linden Royalty, Rodeo Royalty. Young ladies will be having their competition on Saturday at 9:00 AM at the Veterans Hall, and then they do the riding portion in the arena. And then there's also coming up on June 7th, our Parks and Rec is hosting a big summer party kickoff. Maybe Jake has a little more information on that. I don't want to steal your thunder. The, okay, Linden Parks and Rec they're going to have at Friar Park, the big huge bubble machine, I believe. So anyway, foam machine, rock wall, face painting, popsicles. Sounds like it's going to be a blast. So anyway, I will now pass to Randy. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I too also.
Thank you. I too also enjoy League of Cities and Towns, our in a local luncheon, or mix and mingle with our fellow elected officials in Pleasant Grove, American Fork, and Cedar Hills. And the general pen update kickoff, and so we've had a lot of extra meetings, as we all know.
It's been so busy.
I know.
The last two weeks?
Yes. And so, if there was a motion to have less meetings, it'd be kind of nice for a break permit, but I know that doesn't always happen. So grateful to be able to have a lot of training and a lot of interactions. I will say that I'm, just say publicly how great Linden is standing amongst some of our other cities, not just locally, but across the state, as we listen to some of the challenges and things we were, that other municipalities are facing. I'm just so pleased that the good position that Linden finds itself in in so many areas. So, that was a great experience. As to some of these other things, Linden's, the senior center is having a little bit of a challenge, I guess, because of the MAG funding for the month of May and June. MAG is only be delivering meals Thursday, or Tuesday through Friday, so we will not be serving meals on Monday any longer, at least for the next two months. There's been, I guess, we have to figure out our funding and everything because of the COVID, and donations not coming in as readily. So, but we'll still maintain open hours for that, that Monday, but people, and people can bring a sack lunch and still visit. And so, hopefully things will get underway. Along with that, they can only serve 30 meals a day. And so, it's, they're trying to figure out where to go with this. And so, I'm grateful for good planning, at least to be able to do as much as we possibly can. And then there'll be some reassessing on that. They've got some good activities coming up. They've got a Sink of Damio thing going on, of course, on the 5th of May this week, and a lot of other fun activities that they try to supplement to give good things. I will say if anyone has outreach to, or extra jigsaw puzzles, they're always in need of jigsaw puzzles. Some have walked away in days and years past. And so, if you've got anything that is collecting dust in your cupboard and you're tired of, especially post-pandemic, they would love to have them. You can bring them to me. I'll make sure they get them if it's after hours, but we'd love to be able to have some more puzzles for them as well. Tomorrow is pre-meeting, I guess I'll call it, for the, our youth council, as we anticipate getting ready for making some selections. I talked to Brittany today, who is our staff member who's helping with this, Brittany Ladler, and we've got nine candidates so far. We closed our applications on the 10th, so hoping to get maybe a dozen. So, if you know any youth that are interested in being part of our very first Linden Youth Council, applications are available online on our lyndancity.org. You'll be able to find it there. Talking with Kelly Johnson today, we've got some CERT online classes will begin in the leadership position. So, there'll be several of us that'll be taking our training online for the course of May, as maybe more of a beta testing to make sure we, before we implement it for the more masses, the larger masses, for CERT training. And then in June, for the first three Saturdays or weekends in June, we'll be doing some hands-on training. So, that'll be exciting. And then also, it was just such a wonderful, lovely experience for the groundbreaking ceremony for the Linden Temple. And so, just lots of great, exciting things for Linden, and so glad to be part of all of this. So, that's all.
Yeah. Thanks for whoever got us invites to the groundbreaking. That was fun to be a part of. And as it continues, please involve us as much as there, as we're able to. Ditto to everything. Attended all those meetings, great meetings. Wanted to share something from the, from the league convention. People, people come or don't come to city council meetings. People don't come to city council meetings because they are confident in their leaders, or they are clueless. I loved that. And I hope that it's because they're confident. I look at our crowd today, and this is way more than normal. So, we've got a packed house today, based on the three of you that showed up for it. We appreciate you being here. Engagement comes, they said, gain engagement by celebrating everything. I think about the very first time I was at a city council meeting was when I was, I think, 11 or 12, and my Linden baseball team won the state championship, and the city council gave us trophies. And it was so cool. And I, I think about that on occasion when I'm here. It was right here in this building. So, anyways, I think we should take advantage and try to celebrate any way we can, maybe including Parks and Rec, including anything. You know, I think we do a good job at it as well. We, you know, we have the calendar that comes in. But I think getting people in the door for celebrating something will only create more engagement. So, love that. Couple of things from police. I think Chief just stepped out. We're still running an officer short. Officer Honeycutt has left us. They've interviewed a few, but haven't found the right guy. So, we're continuing to look for an officer there. Karen Hardman did graduate, and she won all the awards, just all of them. So, she did a great job and represented Linden well. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. I would echo that and pay tribute to our mayor and council, engaged, involved, passionate, and show up. It's a pleasure and honor to serve with you. A question for Juan. Catch you, and maybe you would need to look into this. We had talked last fall about a sidewalk adaptation down by Spring Gardens and the transition to Walmart. If we could maybe just check, we were waiting kind of for warm weather, and I think that was kind of on the radar. Do you have an update on that, it looks like, maybe?
Spring Gardens, Cobasack by Walmart.
Yes.
Yeah. Trent's got that on his radar. We're gonna do it with the, with the next concrete work we do with the contractor.
Okay. I knew that was in the plan, and it's just starting to warm up. So, curious if we, when we follow up with them. Excuse me. Attended the Provo River Water Users Associating Meeting with Juan. I'll give you a brief water update. Didn't come from there. On average, in January and February, like at an Altoski Resort, there will be 200 inches of snow. This year, in 2022, there were 55 inches. So, about 25% of normal. April, we got 69. So, April was a little bit better. But just to understand, we are still in a severe drought, and that hasn't changed much. So, every bit of drop we get, we're happy for. That's it.
All right. Thank you so much, council. And for those that are online or here in the room, if you hear rumbling, no, there's not thunder outside. It's our contractors putting on the new roof. So, that's going to look, it's starting to, shaping up and looking really great. Okay, so we will now move on to our administrator's report. Adam Cowie, anything in addition to what's been mentioned here?
Those items that are listed, and then just in FYI, it looks like several of you already saw this golf tournament with the PG chamber, that email that went out today. So, that's May 20th. That's all I have. So, thank you.
All right. Wonderful. So, we'll move forward then to item number six, which is the approval of the minutes for the city council meeting from April 18th, 2022. Did you all have a moment to review? Any updates, corrections for Kathy?
I had one.
Okay, very good.
Very simple. In the minutes, on line seven, it mentions that council member Van Cherry phoned.
Which page, Mike?
Well, the minutes, whatever. Oh, pages eight and nine. I'm sorry. I don't have those right in front of me, but it mentions that I emailed, when in fact, I phoned. Not a big deal, but.
Oh, and you did phone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. So, that was really going through that I had. No big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there are any others? Motion?
I make a motion to approve the amendments of April 18th, 2022.
One second. All right. Thank you. Motioned by Councilmember Van Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Powell. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. It's unanimous. Okay, so item number seven, this is our consent agenda. These are some items that I'll go ahead and let our administrator present for this for a moment.
The Central Utah Water Conservancy District, we previously discussed, there's this $400,000 match that they're, or amount that they're providing on these secondary water grants. And so, this is just the agreement that formalizes that. And then, on the Utah Lake Authority is the new governing authority over the Utah Lake area. And the mayor's currently serving on the Utah Lake Commission. And so, this is just appointing her to the Utah Lake Authority Board. So, MAG has indicated it's whomever we choose as cities to be those first-appointed individuals, and then subsequent thereafter. It sounds like that'll probably be a discussion later into some of those MAG meetings. So, any questions on either of those items?
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Jay Coit, seconded by Daryl McElbie. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Yes, the new lake authority virtually replaces the lake commission, and there's, there's a lot of things happening there. So, hopefully, we can continue to have a lot of opportunities as a city to be part of those discussions. All right. So, next, number eight is a review and action on Center Street improvements. So, we'll invite, we have already here our engineering staff here to present some of these items that we started the discussion regarding last time.
Just a minute. Trent will entertain you with some jokes while I load this. Trent?
Let's go, Trent.
I think unfortunately, I'm part of the generation where jokes have kind of died, and it's all about memes and stuff like that.
Okay, here you go while we're waiting, a puzzle joke, since the community center was looking for some. I really probably don't want to brag, but my wife and I are pretty good at puzzles. The other day, we did a puzzle, and on the box, it told us it was going to take us four to six years, and we did it in nine months.
How big was that?
No, it's for four to six years.
Wow.
Right here.
So, there you go, puzzle.
I love it.
For once, we're.
Can't stand puzzles. I will help with the.
With the border?
The border, and then I'm done.
Okay, so, I have an engineer joke for engineers. Okay. New engineer says, how do you estimate how long a project will take? Seasoned engineer, I add up the time required for each task, then multiply by the sum of pi. New engineer, why pi? Seasoned engineer, it ensures that all my budgets are irrational.
Help us out, Noah.
So, here we go.
So, I received, I'm not even sure. So, Adam, as far as broadcasting this out to the world at large, we need to, and you have to share that every time, right?
On that one.
On this screen. Okay, so when I.
Shows on that screen.
Okay. So, I had sent out an email with both an Excel format, as well as separate links to each council member with using Google Spreadsheets for that cost estimate that we had looked at before. And from what I'm seeing here, Councilman McElbie and Councilperson Powell took advantage of the Google Spreadsheets version, and everyone else must have used Excel or something else. So.
He's talking to you, too.
At this point, I'm going to pull up the, kind of the blank spreadsheet, and with that, I can show you what councilpersons Powell and McElbie selected, but the rest of you, I, it's a, I don't know. So, I think tonight, we were to come back and.
Mine to Randy, so.
Right on board with me, huh?
Just check, Mark, next to hers.
So, I first wanted just to kind of go over, I don't want to go through that entire 70-some-odd slide presentation of all the different options and everything, unless you would like to look at anything in particular as far as the different treatments, the different, any review wanted or needed with regards to that.
I think a brief review would be helpful for some of the public that maybe are looking at this for the first time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me pull that up quickly.
No, I did mine on my. My desktop. I downloaded everything before I come.
Yeah.
You too. I think he sent.
Mine wouldn't let me click on anything.
He sent a separate email, but I had to figure that out.
Oh, you know what?
His Gmail one, and I think it's in.
Okay. So, briefly, someone's trying to call me right now, telling me my child was tardy to school. Everyone, for the record, my son was tardy to school. Hope that's embarrassing enough for him that he doesn't do that again. Okay. So, once again, briefly going over these, we originally estimated the north side is essentially complete with the trail. For the base improvement, south side would install, we're missing curb gutter sidewalk and associated pavement to kind of finish that off. And that's showing kind of the portion of missing improvements. We decided not to look at medians because of the associated utilities that were under there, and that would need to be relocated. Streetlights, this is kind of the city standard, the esplanade. We have some examples of some streetlights, which we will look at a little later, as far as some alternatives that are associated with this. Once again, our street light standard would be one per intersection, and then these would be along collector, all collector streets, of which Center Street is one. And then, for my estimate, I didn't go just mid-block. I actually kind of looked at the north and the south to see where the spacing would work for intersections. There are some intersections on the north side that did not have a corresponding, it's not a four-way intersection, it's just a T-intersection. And we had talked about it last time, I think Councilmember McElbie had asked about those existing, what we call Cobra Heads. So, my estimate this time included replacing those to kind of make everything uniform, but then also adding additional ones at about a 300-foot spacing. So, that number went up slightly, I think, from 14 to 18. We talked about hanging baskets on streetlights and some examples of that. There is annual plant replacement associated with hanging baskets and daily watering. I did receive some additional information from Heath Bateman related to how to look, make these look beautiful, continuing to make them look nice, and that, this was from a firm, I think, up in Logan, which is even a little cooler than here, that sells these. And it did take a bit of maintenance, watering a couple of times a day, fertilizing, all those good things. So, bull bouts, we talked about what a bull bout is, and talked about different options, plain concrete, some examples of that, if we were just to do straight concrete in there, or to do some kind of a paver or stamped concrete, as you can see here, some examples. Rock mulch would look like that, and then there obviously are many different varieties of rock mulch in varying sizes, colors, shapes. Xeriscap essentially is water-wise plantings in kind of a xeriscap base. So, there's some examples of different treatments with xeriscap in a planter application. Talked about, we do have some missing pavement along the south side in different portions. So, there would be some cost savings if we were to put a planter in there that would essentially not need to have asphalt in those locations where it's not installed. But then other locations where we do have asphalt, it would require removing that asphalt. But compared to the north side, it would be cheaper to do on the south. So, we looked at some different cross street, cross sections for the street. This is what our existing cross section looks like with the 10-foot trail.
There is a bit of a delay between what's on the street and.
Yes, there is. Sorry, I'll slow down a little bit. So, with the 10-foot trail on the north side, kind of 10-foot parking on both sides, and then two travel lanes with a four-foot walk on the south side. So, that is what our existing standard is along Center Street now. We looked at some other options. This would essentially narrow the pavement from 44 to 36 feet with an eight-foot planter, which would allow for some larger trees, as well as the streetlights and hanging baskets. And this is then showing, once it pops up, essentially the same pavement width, but then putting, splitting that planter on to both sides four foot. So, these are the different value, the different ones we evaluated in the cost estimate. So, then we next looked at some different examples of planter strips. There's quite a delay. Maybe it takes me just going to the next one, so it goes. Yeah, it's just one behind. Okay, so, this shows an eight-foot, I'll go back one. This is a seven-foot xeriscap planters near the. This is a seven-foot xeriscap planters near the UTA front runner station in Provo to give you an idea of what that kind of width looks like with planting, xeriscap, streetlights. This is more nearby, this is an eight-foot rock mulch planter near the Beans and Brew entrance, as you can see that by Dairy Queen, this is on Geneva Road and Vineyard. This is just a little farther down the street, so you can see another eight-foot xeriscap plant, what that would look like with some newer trees. And then this is in, also in Vineyard, near that location around the corner, some, another option. So they, as I pointed out, Utah Water Savers and Weber Basin have a number of examples of what is called flipping your strip or moving essentially from grass. So they give quite a few different examples. The one on the right, when it comes up, shows much larger rock in there, some river rock versus the one on the left is a much smaller rock. And as I mentioned, the flipper strip program, we did not do any kind of estimates with sod grass in these planters or in the bull bouts for two reasons. It's a bit more cost prohibitive, especially when you deal with maintenance, but also because we are trying to conserve water, we did not, I think that would be prudent to look at that as an option. So once again, there's that flipping your strip, there's quite a bit of information at that website. I'm just trying to pull one more up, but it is, there it is. So that shows you kind of an example, hopefully our park strips don't look like the one on the bottom, but they're trying to show how much better it could look at the top, so. We did discuss briefly, when I was on that mag tour for the different projects, we looked at this area, this is in the border of Lehigh and American Fork. In an area where they had planted trees and as they've grown, they are popping the curb and gutter as well as the sidewalk, simply because the planter strip is too narrow and you can see the concrete is in that. That's between three and four feet wide and that's the same tree pulling that up. And then it pops, it's popping the sidewalk in the next picture if it gets there. And that's probably a pretty graphic example of what we don't want with the concrete and the trees popping that up. And then you can see they've actually removed the concrete on this one and on the one on the right have ta, actually chopped the trees down. So it looks like urban blight more than it does beautification. So that's kind of a very brief overview of what we went over in more detail and more time last time. Now on to the spreadsheet, hopefully this isn't irrational, but, so we'd like some... Yeah.
So there's a couple elements, I just had a question for council and staff. So I sent everyone an email, Lehigh Main Street, another element that they add in their, their streetscape is raised, planter boxes. So especially on those bull bouts where it can be really plain, I mean, I think, I, I would love to see us do at least a paver or a stamped concrete versus just plain concrete. But they also have, I sent photos to everyone, raised planter boxes and like right now they have a lot of tulips and bulb flowers which come year after year. Once you plant them, they come back and then we could beautify the bull bouts a little more than just have them be barren. And then the other question I had for staff was if, if planter strips were to be considered, I don't know that council is wanting to consider them. Instead of thinking of them as one long contiguous element, would it ever be feasible to just, you know, you do a planter strip for so many feet and then it comes in and then there's parking space and then planter strip? Then someone could park, because we wouldn't, so there wouldn't be parking outside of the planter strips themselves, would there be sort of, you know, jutting along? What are your thoughts on that?
We looked at that briefly, I guess this cost would be, with the park strips along the entire edge would cost more, obviously, because then we're also pulling in driveways. So if you were to only put those planter strips between driveways, we looked at that very high level. Because of the number of driveways, they're not evenly spaced and so it makes it a bit problematic. We'd have to look at that and see how the spacing would work out, I guess is the best way to put it, because the driveways are not evenly spaced along there. So it may, could look great, it, it looked like it might be kind of hodgepodgey, I guess.
Right, if there could be some uniformity on the north and the south and maybe they weren't frequent, they're much less frequent, but there could be a, a place for a tree and a xeriscap location and then it's just pavement to curb.
Yeah, so we did not evaluate that in much detail, quite frankly.
Just a thought I, I had that maybe there could, it could be less expensive than the whole concept of...
Yeah, part of this expense is tearing out the asphalt to put in the planter strips and part of it also, which becomes, some of the hardest jobs as far as streets for engineers to design are exactly this kind of project where we are having to ta, pull driveways back out to the, now the curb and gutter has been moved out into the street and then we have to tie in the, the driveways. So you have to deal with all the drainage and how that's going to tie into people's driveways. Sometimes you may have to take out the entire driveway in order to make things transition. So it does, so what you're suggesting would make that easier if we didn't, if we didn't put planters in front of driveways. So there's some advantages from, from that standpoint.
Just occasional ones that were designed where it's feasible, except for where you're talking about where there's, currently you have to finish asphalt anyway, right now that's not so much an obstacle.
Obviously that's not as bad and does not as cost prohibitive because there's nothing to tear out or driveways to tie in.
Okay.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Maybe they discussed this with us, I don't recall, but first of all, how many feet of frontage does the temple have from its property line to the east, excuse me, to the west, up to the property line on the east? And having asked that, do we know yet what level of landscaping that they're going to be doing, what their landscaping is going to look like? It might be helpful to know that, to maybe integrate what they're doing or at least see to what level they're doing it.
Yeah, we know that they are putting in a, there's going to be a park strip, correct me if I'm wrong Trent, because you've been looking at these more closely lately. There also is a wider sidewalk that they will be putting in along their frontage that will kind of tie into the Murdoch Trail and across their frontage and then kind of helps transition into our trail on the north side. But there is a park strip north of that and then with streetlights. And I'm trying to remember if I've looked even from, engineers, once again, we're not terribly, not that we don't like trees, but I was not reviewing the landscaping in detail. Do you remember even looking at that?
Yeah, they, they do have a ten-foot sidewalk slash trail. I think, I want to say a six-foot planter strip and I think they were planning to put some trees and other shrubs and whatnot in that park strip. Obviously those trees would have to be kind of more of a narrow footprint so that they're not popping up for the better sidewalk.
How difficult would that be to maybe do, see the takeoffs on, on those?
See the takeoffs?
Well, yeah. Do you want to see the plans or?
The plans, yeah.
I'm just seeing if I can pull them up here, but, yeah.
I'm not talking about writing this media right now, but, you know.
Yeah, because we, we have them, so we could be sleek.
That gives you an idea and there's their, their, whoops, I was trying to zoom in. Yeah, let's see if I can see the frontage along there. Three hundred and eight feet for that one and this one, hundred and fifty, six hundred and eighty-eight, I don't have a total on that, if I can pull that up in a second, but.
Question while you're doing that, do, do our figures, the figures that you're proposing for cost-wise, does that take into account that four, five hundred feet of temple frontage?
Yeah, this, this does not include anything that the temple is, owns or will be improving at all. So our, my estimates go basically up to this edge, the, the westerly edge of their, their property.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, I'm looking to see if this set, now this set does not have any landscaping that I can see, at least not yet.
Well, it's not, it's not crucial, other than to say I'm confident that whatever it's going to be is going to be nice and high quality and classy, so.
Yeah, we can get this to you, we can look in more detail, but I'm, this computer's struggling right now.
It's a very big plan set.
Yeah, it's huge. We can weed, we can, tongue in cheek, we can weed those out from the plan sets, so. Yep.
Yeah, it's not what we want to.
Adam, walk us through the financing on this, are we splitting it between two budget years? We've got some, you know, some great stuff here, help us, would it, would it completely?
This is a phased project, so this year we are looking at utility improvements where we're replacing a water line and digging up a section basically in front of, from about Center Street down to Two Hundred East-ish. So kind of in front of Linden Elementary and the turnoff down into the other schools there. So that's this first year is utility replacement, the second year would be reconstructing shoulders, curb gutter sidewalk, firing the right-of-way, widening everything. And then the third year actually doing the asphalt replacement. So, so we're pulling from utility funds for the water line and then most of the other work is coming out of our road improvement funds. So it's, it's general fund money or classy road fund money. Perfect. Yeah, Jake, I did want to bring that up, so we had talked about the cost. Some of this work needs to be done eventually no matter what, regardless of the beautification stuff. So for example, that road's not in the greatest of shape and this utility line, it's the last steel water line we have in the system. So that needs to be done regardless and that's kind of this green area, this utility here section. So there's, you know, about three hundred thousand out of the total. Then you've got the pavement treatment, which is what Adam was saying, would be kind of the last thing we'd want to do in order to make it all look nice at the end. We, we would be doing the curb and gutter and sidewalk and that kind of stuff the second year essentially. And then coming at the very end and making it look nice after they've beat it up during construction for the temple, right, so.
And please remind me of one other thing on the light poles, I failed to ask this earlier on the light poles. Do we have any participation at all with Utah Power on installing those or it's all, it's all on our dime? Is there any, is there any sharing involved or?
So that's actually probably a segue into a different conversation that we wanted to have, whether we want to have it now or later tonight. So Juan, I don't know if you want to, we brought in some examples of some streetlights here. We've been talking to Rocky Mountain Power lately, what we're finding is the streetlights that Linden has chosen are like top of the line, they're great, hollow fame lights. But we're having a very difficult time getting them and we're also finding that they're quite costly. So developers are often saying, can we use something else because these are top of the line, but do we need to go that expensive? So what we brought tonight are, Juan, so we have three different lights here. That, the one that Juan has right there, that is the, just the top, that would be the Washington Post light, which is in our commercial areas. Many areas right now have the glass in them, but we have adopted this new, this is LED without the glass, the light does not refract out and it's a bit more night sky compliant, thank you, dark sky compliant.
So these are both hollow fame?
Yep.
And these are on our standard right now? Okay, and then we have this one from, this is what Rocky Mountain Power is offering to, if we go on a contract with them, for them to take back the lights. Instead of us public works doing all the installation and maintenance, is that we can offer you this, which is an in-between size. Doing this two, they're readily available and with a significant cost savings. I don't know if anybody driving down the industrial park in a residential, if you're able to tell the difference that you're looking at a bigger light or a fixture or a smaller light fixture. We're kind of thinking of proposing just going to one standard size and then just make a difference on the length of the pole, which is fourteen foot for residential and we'll still use a sixteen foot for, but they come at a significant discount and...
What's, what is significant, what's the price?
So we, so it's about half. Half of the cost of what the, what we're paying now for the hollow feens. So for the esplanade that has the, the neck that comes out, those are about fourteen thousand dollars apiece installed. And these that are the straight up are more like in the twelve thousand dollar range. So we're seeing from Rocky Mountain Power getting caught, you know, basically around five to six thousand.
How much do you give the bid for the one, the resident request?
So the resident, yeah, we had a resident request, that one is the older, it's a different style even than these. And that one's only three, that was called the Town and Country, in fact, I've got some pictures here, we can show you those.
One more clarification though, did, did we hear you correctly that if we surrender the current lights that we have?
The Cobra style.
So, so Utah Power would provide these?
So, yeah.
Do we still have to buy them?
We still have to buy them. However, there is a cost savings from an energy use standpoint, once we go to an LED versus the incandescent. They're actually going through a program right now trying to swap those out that we're going to participate in, because we'll make that up in three to four years just for what it will cost to put those other style of lights in. To go to LED conversion, even though they don't look much different, we'll get that back just on the energy savings.
These two on the table are?
All three of these are LEDs.
I just assumed everything was LED.
So Juan, you're, so Rocky Mountain, if you suggested we go to these for residential and commercial or keep the larger for commercial?
We're thinking of just going everything this style for residential and commercial.
For both, okay.
What do you think, is there, you guys see a big?
That's, that's savings of about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars if we do this roughly.
Yeah, with the other items?
So this probably is like a separate conversation than we're having tonight, we just wanted to make you aware. As it relates to Center Street, we are having some issues, not only in the supply chain, getting them right now, whereas Rocky Mountain Power has these in stock. And so it's much quicker to get new lights and to get them repaired and cheaper. But also as we're contemplating lighting along Center Street, although our standard right now is the esplanade with, that kind of has the hanging arm that comes out. We are having some issues not only from a cost and also getting those, but they tend to get hit with vehicles going around the corner because they have the hangover and they also, because they have that counterbalance out there, we have issues with them essentially wanting to fall over and standing upright. So as you're thinking about all these different options and things, I guess I would just throw out potentially also looking to go to a different light style, which would be less expensive along Center Street and potentially adopting that citywide, that decision doesn't have to be made tonight. I'm just kind of putting planting seeds in your head to be thinking about these issues as we're talking about Center Street. But we just wanted to show you the middle one, it would be nice if we could standardize on that from a cost as well as stockpiling parts standpoint. And I guess to go back to Juan's point, at least these two closest to me, the reason Rocky Mountain Power picked that middle one is because they said that matches the style that most of the communities want. It's from a different vendor that they've had really good luck with, it does seem to be very quality parts, but it is significantly cheaper. And they're able to get the parts significantly quicker and stockpile those. So there's, there's a lot of advantages that direction as we're looking forward for lighting and I don't know if the, you know, the council would put that in your thought process if that's, this is something we would also want to look at along Center Street. As, as we're talking costs, because these other lights are not inexpensive. As, as we're talking costs, because these other lights are not inexpensive.
Also privately, if you recall, I spoke with you and Trent, and I may have won, if you're in the meeting or not, about the poles, those fiberglass poles. How many of them around the city are in terrible disrepair? They're faded and.
Yeah, they're all white and.
Yeah, they're all white. Uh, would, would this be the same kind of poles that would be used?
No, these would all be aluminum, and they have a couple of different styles, either we, just straight, or that one that has, I would call it fluting, more like the base of these lights. Which I'd say, I think it's a more decorative look. It adds a little bit of price, but probably is worth it for the, for the look.
What is the name of this Rocky Mountain?
So this, so instead of hollow faint, it's King, K.I.N.G., Luminaire is the, the brand.
And they still have like, for example, like an optional arm if you wanted to be able to hang banners or other things on the fixture? Okay.
Yeah, and I don't think we want to go to this. This is essentially what Rocky Mountain Power used to do, and they do provide these to some, this is called the Town and Country. This doesn't look all that great, so we are not really. Not really looking at this. These are once again even, even less expensive, but you really.
These are nice with the finials and, and, uh, and of course the, um, dark sky compliance and the LED is a great way to go.
We had with the glass, the glass just refracts the, the light. And that's the problem we're having as Gilman Lane just travels so far. Straight down, half, half the cost of the, to run it.
All right, council, your thoughts on these? You want to keep these under consideration?
We don't need an action item. We probably, in fact, if we want to go that direction.
This isn't something that you'll decide on tonight, just know that we have an option, Mike, to answer your question. We have an option, option for some cheaper lights that will look more like that center one. And we'll bring that to you as a separate act, action item from this discussion. So if you want streetlights, it'll be something like one of them.
I prefer the term less expensive.
This guy, we have ordered some, and since times evening, and we have good to see him or tell us when, when they're gonna be here.
But we haven't entered into any agreements with Rocky Mountain Power, and in fact, they wanted us to retrofit a bunch of lights. There's a lot more expense to do that citywide that would be part of all of this. And so there's a lot more involved in that. I think for the purposes of tonight's discussion, plan on that higher cost, worst case scenario. That's what it might cost for streetlights.
That always gives a cushion. Okay, all right. So you're not looking for direction from council or feedback at this time? We're just planting a seed, presenting?
As far as the lighting goes.
The lighting, correct.
We wanted to bring these to show you, we have some less expensive options that we, as staff, will probably be coming with. For some kind of action item.
Are you proposing that? Or are you throwing it out there? Is that a suggestion from staff?
Yeah, our, well, we're not taking action, but I, yeah, we would suggest going with this King Luminaire over the hollow faint. And using it in both industrial and residential, but we would obviously need to give you more information to chew on.
Perfect.
One thing that I would have a question on is the lumens output of the King versus our standard commercial. The standard commercial is bigger. Is it a little bit more?
We can get in more details on that. So they chose on this particular, this, it's called the King Clarion is the name of the model. Uh, it sits essentially right in the middle on the light output between our residential, which is the Taft, which we showed you. And the Washington Post light for the commercial. So it's kind of, once again, middle of the road as far as light output. You can put shielding on them and things in case it's too much light for a neighbor, but it's, it's halfway in between.
Okay.
And you don't really get to choose upping the, the intensity. It's, it's, they, they come in like. That's, that's what they've chosen in order to keep costs down, is to kind of standardize it everywhere.
No dimmer?
Yeah, no dimmer switch. I know you can't change, and apparently you can't change, you could if you wanted to pay for it, change colors for holidays, but we don't suggest that. Yeah, sorry. Okay, so back to this. We would love if, at all possible, at the end of the discussion this evening, to have a path going forward on options that we're choosing. So that we can then go towards design and finalize and sharpen our pencils. Yeah, and present this to the public as far as what our, what we're doing going forward with this.
All right, well, uh, it's not, uh, I, we do have some members of the public here. We're willing to take some questions or comments on those, if you'd like to come forward.
So I'm Daryl Porter. I live at eighty-eight East Center, so part of the Center Street thing that you're talking about. If you look at where the sidewalk comes on each side, on the east of my house, that sidewalk, if you keep it standard, will come right through my front yard. Right through the water boxes, right through, leaves me about probably fifteen feet of lawn in front of my house. My house is probably the closest to Center Street of, of anybody's there that I know of. So if you're gonna standardize it and have that all the way up, then you're taking part, I don't believe that's the city, why do I think that's my property? I love the idea of beautification of the, of the frontage, but I hate the idea of you taking my lawn. So I, I just don't know what the plan is to compensate people for that kind of thing. Because it's, it also, I believe, I don't know for sure, but I think it cuts right against the big tree that I have there as well on the corner.
Can you give us your address one more time?
Eighty-eight East Center.
He's the corner going into Tepanogus Academy.
Yeah. So that's a concern I have. It's, uh, I understand the concept and everything you want to do. But my concern is if you keep it lined up with the sidewalk in front of Tressler's house on, they just live on the east side of that street that goes to Tepanogus Academy. Uh, the street further up from that, in front of, uh, Pass Johnson's house up to the next street there, that's further out.
Yeah, that was an interesting question. The sidewalk is different in front of different, different profile in front of different homes.
Measurements I believe Leonard Lee was given when he put that sidewalk in, when they built that home, that's what the city told me.
You show going a little bit further east, Noah, you can see how the sidewalk. It's.
So that sidewalk back down a little bit.
Go a little bit further to the, to the west.
The other direction, yeah.
You can't really, it's, when you're there in person, you can really see a lot better. Right there, it's, it's a few feet further.
This one, and then you got, in front of our house, there's not any sidewalk. But if you continue that, where that's, and you're talking about widening the streets.
So which sidewalk is the correct easement or the correct one?
That would depend if you want a planter or not, um, and or, but measuring here as far as pavement. That's essentially in the correct location as far as the forty-four feet is that narrower strip there. Here, it's a little wider.
Well, I don't want to plant her in my front yard.
And that's about three feet, three to four feet wider as far as the asphalt goes.
And that is an intersection that has a, a good amount of traffic with the school.
Right.
School traffic there as well. So that might be a location to consider.
So those are, those are concerns that I'm coming with as you make these plans. Because if you just look at where my yard is in front of my house there, you can see where that sidewalk would go. And, uh, that's where all the sprinkler boxes, all that stuff is, not that that can't be moved, but I would sure entertain someone else moving it.
So as, okay.
Yes, go ahead.
So as part of this project, once, once you as council members determine what you want to do, we're, we're waiting for that direction. And once we have that established, then our intent was then we would prepare a preliminary design and then reach out to those property owners. Be able to draw it out, see how it impacts those areas, and then we would be trying to negotiate with them to acquire property if that was needed. And we would have to go through appraisals, pay fair market value if they were willing sellers. Um, if they're not willing sellers, that would be a discussion for you to consider as a city council, what you want to do.
And will there be a process to let them know where the current easement line is, because some may not know where it is?
Until you decide what you want to do, we don't have a plan to take to them, to tell them anything yet. And so you could, I mean, in theory, you could end up just saying, we're just gonna overlay the road and not improve anything on the south side of the road. So that's an option, but we haven't heard from you with that decision.
Right.
Well, my request is just as you consider these things, you need to think about those of us who live there that it's going to impact. Because it has quite an impact on my yard, because it's not very big. And it will definitely impact the ability to resell. All, all those things are an impact. So it does have a lasting impact when you make decisions like this, so thank you.
Come on up, Jeremy.
Right next to the circle driveway. Yeah, so, and, and by the way, that intersection right there with the pine tree, um, you're right? Yeah, right there. Um, it's just a matter of time before someone gets hit and killed right there. Those parents, they're, they're late and they're turning and they're not even moving for those kids. And, um, it, it's just, it's probably the most dangerous school intersection, that, that spot right there.
I agree.
So, uh, here are my thoughts. I mean, I'm, I'm not a city planner or anything. I, I guess my education came from a book, um, Jeff Speck wrote, who consults with cities across the nation. So he's, he's got a pretty big name out there. If you haven't read Walkable Cities by Jeff Speck, I would, I would suggest reading it. Download it on your phone, great article, he narrates. It's good. It's actually pretty entertaining. You wouldn't think that'd be entertaining, but it was pretty entertaining. Um, one thing he talks about is getting over the idea that wide streets are safe streets. You know, a, a, someone who's good at math, left brain is gonna sit down and go, well, of course, a wider street would be a safer street. But then what happens is, um, the mentality is, wow, look how much room I have to speed. And so people drive according to how that road feels. Push the button on that until it turns green.
So they, they drive according to how that street feels, not according to, um, the, the speed limit of that street. So I think we have plenty of space on this road if we step outside of the box. If we say, look, we, we've inherited this design concept that streets have to be a certain way. But if we take bold action and go, okay, well, what's current? That's work, that may or may not have worked for years. But what's the current information telling us? And I think it's actually changing. So I think we have plenty to work with on this width, on this wide street, where we could accommodate, um, a park strip without actually coming into our yards. Um, I was, Santa Clara is one that, um, I've talked to the mayor about quite a bit. If you pull up images of Santa Clara, I love how they actually do have those pop out landscape boxes. Um, they don't need to be perfectly uniform, so this is not something that we have to look at driveways and go, whoa, there's just so many driv-. No, you just work with what you got. And what that does is when it, the, the landscape box comes into the road and you plant a tree, and preferably the same tree, all the way up Center Street. Then all of a sudden that street fills like a beautiful tree-lined street that's this wide versus this wide. I know it's not cheap, and I don't think it's something that all has to be done this year. But you take a section and you go, this is what we're gonna do, and then time maybe finish it all the way out. Um, but we're getting rid of some off-street parking, but not all off-street parking. Because again, they're planter boxes with two or three spaces between, maybe more. I mean, Linden does have some big, um, half acre and, and larger homesites. So, you know, it could be, it could be six in a row, but at a certain point you'd pop one in. Also, while you were talking, I was looking up images of Santa Clara, and it looks like, um, the sidewalk and street.
Santa Clara, Utah, or Santa Clara, California?
Uh, Utah. Yeah, it was just, I remember a few years back, it was just a really wide, boring street, and then they came in and redesigned it. Now it's just, it's a fun, it's a fun drive. One thing I noticed though was, um, sometimes the sidewalk would come to the road, um, where there was kind of a pinch point. And then other times it would wind back off with a park strip. So if you're walking, it, it may not be perfectly.
Linear.
Linear, and that's okay too, right? I mean, this is the, the organic feel of things. So I thought that was kind of interesting. I had another thought, I think I lost it, but, um.
And I can think of a place right now, uh, the corner where there's a big heritage tree that the sidewalk went around.
And it looks beautiful.
The turn to Rocky Mountain.
No one will drive by that and think.
And the Walker Farms, it's, yeah, it's lovely right there.
You actually drive by it and go, oh, that's kind of cool. And that was a decision someone had to make, and I'm glad they made that decision, because I think it looks great. Um, and the other thing I was gonna say is just, it, again, this is a budget issue, and it could probably be done down the road. But these crosswalks all need looked at, and one of the images that popped up looked great. I hope we can do something like that where it, where the sidewalk pinches in. Uh, the next step would be to use a different material on that crosswalk, um, whether it's concrete or concrete with pavers. And psychologically, when you come up to a break in the material, not just the white lines, but a break in that black top. Then psychologically, you're going, something's different, slow down, and you slow down naturally. Speed bumps, no one likes speed bumps, so this is kind of a way around speed bumps. Uh, oh, and the last point I'll make, and, and then I'm done, is, uh, just how valuable it is getting people, the sidewalks off of the street. You know, it just doesn't ever feel safe, and, and it's not a great experience when you're rock, walking right next to a car. So any kind of buffer, I think, is, is valuable. And again, maybe it's not the whole way, but looking at the walking trail, I liked the one image that showed a split with the parking strip on both sides. So anyway, I think that's it. Thanks.
All right, council. Back to you. Lots of thoughts, but.
Well, no, obviously lots of things to be worked out for sure, is how things will be impacted. This is to give, uh, city staff direction, kind of with budgets and ideas. And I don't know how you want to do it, Mayor. I'm all over the streetlights. Absolutely.
The new?
Yep, new ones.
Yeah, you, you know, I appreciate the comments we had, and I think there's gonna be a time and a place for us to address those. The, what's before us today on the agenda, you know, I think we could probably take four hours and individually go through our own visions. Uh, I think I've had an opportunity to look at, at my fellow council members here, and they're very close on their visions, and, and I'm right there with them. Um, Mike and Daryl, I don't know where you guys are at, but for the, for the sake of time and for the sake of moving forward, where we've already spent a couple hours last meeting. Um, you know, maybe if we pulled up Randy's, or maybe if we pull up Darrell's, and we can kind of determine where we're at and where we want to be. Because I think for the most part, um, at, at least the majority of the councils are pretty close. And maybe there's two or three items that we just, hey, should we do this or this? And then I think we're probably pretty close. It's my guess.
Well, did you have a chance to read my email that I sent out this afternoon?
I did, absolutely. And, and I appreciated those points, and, you know, it, 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 it caused me to think of a couple of questions that I had. Some of which I've asked, some of which, uh, I've asked fellow council members. And, and, and I think we all had an opportunity to read that, and I still think we're all about where we're at. And, and for the sake of moving the meeting forward, I think that's probably a good way forward if we pull up Randy's. Maybe, I don't know where Darrell, or I haven't seen Darrell's. If we pulled up one of their, theirs, I think that'd be a great place to start.
So I will start with, uh, Darrell's, simply because he's topping the list there, so.
Perhaps before we go to that comparison, is it okay if I make a couple of comments specifically to the special circumstances on some of the properties? It's gonna be quite simple, this vision that the majority of us are kind of feeling kind of close to. But there are areas, and in front of the Kings and the Porters is one of those special areas to me. And because not only is the, the way their, their properties don't align, your two properties are significantly different in where your easements are and your, your boundaries. But, uh, so the proximity to schools, and that is a huge, huge issue for most, I mean, for all of us, I know that. But for me, I really, I know these people, they're neighbors and friends of mine all along this, um, area. And though I don't have children in school anymore, we, I know we all are concerned about that. So I know that, um, to Jeremy's points, all of those things that, those are things that I embrace, those ideas. And I know that we have been schooled very well by our engineers about the, the narrowing of, of roads and how that is important for us. We don't want to maintain those. We do not want a wide thoroughfare. So just know that that's nothing, we don't want to pave them, we don't want to maintain them. But we also know it's also a, a benefit for safety reasons. So that's nothing that we're gonna be trying to chop off into people's yards and to maintain. Was it a sixty-six roadway, whatever that is along there, our collector, what's our collector road?
So it's a sixty-six foot right of way.
Right.
And along here, because of the trail, it's a little narrow.
But just normally, a collector road is sixty-six, right?
Six feet of right of way and fifty feet of pavement.
Right, so we're not trying to maintain that distance all the way down, even though it's a collector road. Um, that's not our intent to just throw that all out there and make it work from State Street up to, um, Ninth East, Twelfth East, what is that, Twelfth?
Ninth.
Ninth East.
I like, I liked what Mr. King said. I, I'm with you. I don't envision in my mind a, a big thoroughfare. Where people just, you know, check out zero to sixty in four point five seconds or whatever. Uh, I think you, you're right, there's a lot of things that we can do psychologically. Uh, I see it as more, more narrow to regulate traffic, some traffic calming. Uh, I see it as more, more narrow to regulate traffic, some traffic calming devices that are not speed bumps, uh, and some things like that. But I think we could do some beautiful things with, I like the idea of the planter strips outside of the right-ways, if that's possible. And the ones you sent today were just-
Like a pop, or the, okay.
And I, and I like the cur, the, uh, pressed brick. Uh, what do you call it?
Color is stamped concrete?
Stamped concrete. I think that's really attractive.
But to that point, I just feel like that we need to take, I, I, it's important to me, I can't speak for everybody, it's important to me that we maintain special consideration for special areas, that property owners' rights and children's safety, safety in intersections are paramount over the beautification. Those are all pretty and, and nice and important to me. But the way down the list of priorities is making sure that we take care of what is just best practices with our citizens and what we can do for our streets. And of course, our budget comes in there, um, just as equally as important as that. So we have a lot of, of facets that we need to look at. And for me, that, those are something that are important. So just know that we are not just steamrolling ahead, that right now, we're just kinda looking at the concepts. And then the staff will reach out to you and getting all those things. And that still has to come to us for approval as well. Am I correct? Okay.
Do you wanna make sure we-
What does, ask, ask that again. What?
Um, I said it as made of straight, keeps my task, and I love that. Just making sure that, how we proceed on how the road will be lineated all the way along. Whether we go wide, short, I mean, there's that, just through ki, through staff. You tell me.
I think that would just be through staff, 'cause I-
So-
What, I, what I would hate to have happen is that you're making a legislative decision on thirty-some property owners and-
That's why I wanna be clear, that what this action is, how much-
My intent after tonight, our, our understanding was this would provide us direction. We would prepare preliminary plans and then start approaching property owners based off of that. And so-
By-
If, if your intent is that you wanna approve the frontage design on every single property, that's completely different than what I think we had in mind. So-
There's a space in between that conversation, though.
I agree.
I think there should be another meeting where there's input, but maybe not on every single property.
No, and so there's various elements that have been presented. So I think what we could help staff in the direction they're looking for is these elements. Which elements do we like? How frequently do we want these elements to be presented? So lighting, I think we're, we're there as far as the quantity of the lights that are, that have been discussed along the, the street. Is, is that, okay, is that fair?
I'd like to know what the thoughts are on hanging baskets.
Uh, why don't we just go through the checklist?
Okay, yeah, let's go.
Start with the top. We've got the base improvements regardless, right? I mean, I think we're all, so that's not even an option. So I went back and looked at the lights. As I said, this would be one per intersection, whether that intersection is on the north or the south.
Of all four corners, there would be one?
Be one per intersection. So not one per corner, but one per intersection. And then on the south side, at three-hundred-foot spacing. So it's not just mid-block, but on some of those longer blocks, you would pick up an additional one. So you basically had, it's an, an average of three-hundred feet on the south side. So you are not gonna have as many lights on the north side. We have the trail there. But you do have them at the intersections. Is that division? That, that's what I, at least that's where this number of eighteen comes from.
And how far apart are they on the north side? Are they, is there a measurable amount?
In the north, the blocks are not nearly as long, so it actually works out pretty well. Um, I, actually, on some of these, where we had an existing light on the north side, and it made sense, we get some cost savings if we're essentially doing all the work on one side versus the other and kind of leapfrogging. So there are a couple of additional ones on the north side where it made sense to try to get some light coverage. But it's not doing one of these where it's essentially jogging back and forth. Well, not only is it not matching, like marching, you know, soldiers down the road, it's also not necessarily going bouncing back and forth every three-hundred feet.
Alternating, okay.
That's something we could look at, but there will be some additional costs there, simply because we'd have to trench across the trail or, because electricity doesn't, is not available in all spots. So I, I kind of loaded the south side from a cost-saving standpoint, knowing that the improvements are not there. But I did add some additional ones on the north. And we can massage that.
Okay. Counsel. So on this particular item, we good? Thumbs up?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Click it.
All right. Next item.
Hanging baskets. This would be, as that picture depicted, essentially one, you have the hanging arm and two baskets per each one of these eighteen lights. Now, I was speaking to Randy earlier today. Does it make sense to put any hanging baskets on the north side of the road?
So I, I like the option of them being possible. You know, the arm maybe to do banners, but, you know, if we're gonna do hanging baskets, that's a big, a bigger budget question in any given year to, to maintain flower pots hanging, but-
I think it's too erratic on the north side. I think just the synergy of a straight line or semi-straight line visually of, on one side.
I had made a possible, a suggestion of possibly maybe doing, I call it the bells and whistles. Maybe doing a little bit more with hanging baskets, if that's the direction we wanna go, from basically State Street to however far east we wanna go, maybe Second East. Because we're not talking a lot of residences there. We're not talking, uh, I mean, that, that, to me, would be a lot, if we're gonna do baskets, that would be a logical place. I, I don't personally feel good. I mean, I'm not gonna do sleepover, but I think it's more trouble than it's worth, just in my opinion, to have baskets all the way, all the way down. Maintenance-
There's the annual cost, too.
Yeah, we already know we have to hire someone to water them and stuff. And while it's not a huge amount, I, I think we could do something, like say, more to the entrance, uh, if, if, if we wanna go that route, but not all the way down.
I think they're lovely, but they're kind of a, a little more extravagant item. I would like to see us invest in maybe some beautification efforts. Plant greenery that's more permanent, you know, maybe some of those, like at the bulbouts, doing what Lehigh does on their main street, where they have a, a plant, a raised box. Or maybe some actual trees and pop-outs that are more permanent. Because those annual flowers, you know, you have them for a season and then they're gone.
Just talk to Darrell.
Any thoughts on that?
So we're moving past baskets?
Although I like the idea of an arm that could have a banner, like during Linden days and our parades and things like that.
You could add a planter to it anytime.
And then there, it could still have a planter if someone so wished to do so.
So are we talking a single, I'm just gonna put, I mean, it'd probably say, for what we're estimating for the lights, the banner arms are probably included in that. I don't know if I need to worry about that with-
I think we have a banner arm.
So are you, are we talking-
There's options.
Just so I know, look, are we talking a single one sticking out perpendicular to the street? So you see the banner as you drive in, or is it parallel?
I think so. Yeah. Just one per fixture.
I'm just gonna put single banner arm, kinda like we have on our lights right now, right? As far as the commercial area on the Washington postlight.
There a difference between a, um, the sturdiness of the arm for a banner versus a hanging plant? Is it a different, different quality?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking, I'm thinking, I know what the banner arms are for, because we have those on our Washington postlights already. I would think the weight would be less for a banner arm, as far as what it's carrying.
Well, what I'm saying is if we chose to do either, that way, if we, if for some reason we felt like we wanted to for a special occasion, then in, for a special year-
Just look at that option.
That it's a multi-function.
Yeah, maybe some baskets for the grand opening type of thing, and then it's just not a-
For one year and decide. That's why I like to not putting the-
Hundred-year celebration of the city.
A hundred-year celebration.
Right.
Yes, exactly.
A single, a single banner perpendicular, and if we hang a plant on it, so be it.
Make sure you can handle the weight, if we're gonna invest in arms.
Do a blind basket.
Versatility.
Okay. Uh, that probably takes care of all the hanging baskets. Bulbouts, I hear, I'm hearing a consensus of stamped concrete or pavers is what Randy wanted us to maybe look at.
Reason for that is the durability of the paver versus the, um, stamped concrete is known to fade over the years. And I think just longevity of a good quality paver would have much better appearance. And then to, um, the crosswalks, at, at some time, if we did want to put some sort of a park, uh, um, sidewalk through the intersection, that would be a nice lovely addition at some point in the future, if we chose to do that.
So if there're pavers, actual pavers, we, what, we treat the ground underneath, put a layer of probably something to-
If there're pavers, yeah, you end up putting down a layer of sand. If any of you have done pavers before.
Every now and then, uh, what do you call it?
There's the-
So there's a trip hazard, um, I think is-
The spray.
Oh, you're talking for like wheat, like, roundup?
That's the roundup, probably, occasionally.
So-
I really like what Mayor sent, uh, with some of those raised baskets, not raised baskets.
Raised boxes.
Raised boxes. And if, you know, I'd be in favor of that.
I wouldn't mind those closer to the Main Street, Center Street, you know, versus down the, the, I think, to keep that in that, your consideration of keeping it more close to the State Street area.
Probably the two intersections that are the most trafficked are, uh, Main and Center. And then, uh, Fourth and Center, Fourth. That's where I envision having a really nice visual there.
True.
I wouldn't be opposed to, depending on trying to treat the safety as a special consideration. If there was one needful one right there at the entrance to, um, Tempanoak's Academy, if there was one that would then create a buffer, you know, a, a stand-up, maybe as a safe, i- if, if, if it were to work as a safety.
My only concern is visually, we probably need to be able, be able to see pedestrians really well there, the little, the little people.
I'm just saying if it were to help with safety, not, not to-
There's a three-foot clear vision area on those corners, and so we couldn't have anything brought with taller than that.
I'm just saying if it helps with safety, not, I don't want it only to help with safety.
The ones on Main Street, Lehigh are short. And I, also Rexburg, Idaho, has, uh, their main street has them as well.
So just a, FYI, then, so he's got ninety-eight thousand four hundred thirty on the stamped concrete. If you're adding a PI connection to all of those as well, it's gonna increase that cost.
And planter boxes. And I don't have an idea what that's gonna cost, but your cost, it's gonna be about two thousand dollars per, per corner for each one of these. So there'll be some additional cost. Yeah. So we could add, you know, another two thousand dollars plus whatever the planter boxes themselves and plants cost.
And I don't know if we need planter boxes on all four corners. I'm thinking, I mean, we need to probably look at- Main Street, Center. We've got the corner of the school.
This is anticipating only on the south side.
Only the south side.
Because we start getting into the north, once again, the prices go through the roof, which if we want to, we can.
Will we be looking to match the bulbouts on the north side?
So-
On the corners?
Necessarily. It would make more sense to put these where we have, on these main intersections, we could. But then you're taking out existing improvements or-
Okay, very good. Fair enough.
So these, this number thirteen, I guess I'm getting at, is not anticipating putting in one on north. If you want them on the north, we can go back and we can raise that number up and have some additional cost.
Okay.
Could I ask if, if it would be considered, if, what would the consideration be if we took the west side of Main Street and Center Street, city property there on the northwest? And then behind the gas station, t- if, as we do those improvements, if we could do north on that one section, so it looks like an entrance gateway, you know, it's city property, that we would do these raised beds, perhaps make a little, I don't know, presence.
Make a statement.
Right there, just on the statement, right there at, at, um, at that approach.
Isn't it?
So you're saying at State Street?
Right. Is, no, I'm sorry, not at State Street.
Up the next block.
At Main Street, like where the Tabithas, um, yep, right there. Mm-hmm. Those two areas. Would, but is that something we could do a little bit prettier addition there? And then we wouldn't have to, I don't know, just be a nice gateway entrance.
You were saying, Mike, as far as maybe-
That's what I envisioned.
Dressing up more of this area, or as far east as you were, however we wanna go. But kinda making this more of a grand entrance and then backing off on improvements.
And then taper it as we get closer.
I think we could do that with, with minimal disruption to, to private property, or to homes, I should say, residences. But that would be a beautiful entry into the-
Especially since one of them is our property.
I guess one of the questions is gonna be land ownership, which we, we have the right-of-way through here right now if we choose to keep the street as wide as it is, rather than going on a road diet. And UDOT will have something to say about this, where State Street is a, it's a UDOT-controlled facility, at least right at the entrance.
But I'm thinking Main Street and Center Street.
Not State.
Not State.
So just leave that alone?
Not State Street. So, and the, the width there behind the, the service station, if we did a bulbout there, then it would help then start restricting as we get to the school areas, we go further east.
You're, you're saying on the diagram on your slides, they show those bulbouts.
Sure.
I, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. You're envisioning a planter box, something like the size of this table, in the bulbout, out into the street area. Is that correct?
This is just something that, based off of the suggestions of Lehigh that the mayor gave us, something similar to there, just on the west side of those two intersections.
So on this side, freeze on one of those that show up for, yeah, right.
Once it gets to it.
This is what she's thinking. Kind of a short bulb, on the bulbout, planter box. Right. So you're, you're thinking a planter box in-
Deal with this thing, yes.
Hmm.
This is just, there, finally came up.
You go that one?
Yeah.
In this area, not back on the property, right?
Yes, in part of the bulbout.
Okay. Okay. I just wanna make sure that that's what everybody's envisioning, so.
So we consider planter boxes with bulbouts, that's, that's one category?
That's what I'm hearing, right? I mean-
Okay, just keep in mind, we don't have cost estimates for that. That's a new idea, so.
Just, just a thought, is that we tried to-
Beautify the bulbouts of, of a little feature. Yeah.
Are we able to jump in, or is that, have we moved out past that? How does this work?
You have a quick comment, or?
Well, I mean, I, yes and no. I mean, I, I think at that intersection, that is where you spend your money. Just, like, just, yeah, it makes sense to me, but not even, Randy, you were saying do it on one side or the other. I think the four corners right there is where you spend your money. And then you gradually, as you move up, spend less money, maybe take it the next box, uh, block. Now, I live there, so it's kinda self-serving, but then you move down the road as you can afford it. But this, to me, seems like the entrance into Linden.
And I would say yes to that. My concern just was with the, with the school property. Yeah, so.
Who owns where all those cars are parked right there?
Pardon?
The city does.
The city. That's a huge asset right there.
No, that's, that's, that's private property.
I think the city, doesn't the city own where the cars are parked?
But I'm pretty sure we own it.
Yeah, the city owns.
Cars are on the right-of-way.
They're on the Linden-City right-of-way. And so I think there's an opportunity there. The school needs to figure out parking, because they don't have enough parking. But that right there is a terrible thing to drive into. It's like, ugh, it is.
So we will look at, um, additional bulbouts, if you wanna do them at the north side. Planter boxes in some, and get an idea of cost.
Okay, so-
Can I, can I ask, Mayor, can we do little straw poll votes on every one of these checks? So that we can get a read? 'Cause I, I have a hard time knowing, is everybody in favor of that check that just got made? So if, if we could, take a straw poll vote, this doesn't bind you until the very end of this, but-
On the bulbouts?
On every checkbox. Do a straw poll, just to see if we have three or more council members in favor of that.
Okay. Bulbouts at the main, the two main intersections.
You just want it based on just what is being presented here, not the extras that we're presenting. What do you want, Adam?
On everything that we're talking about.
Okay, so bulbouts on Main and Center, and then Fourth and Center. Bulbouts, just bulbout concept.
Raise the hands.
I like bulbouts.
Bulbouts with, with-
But the question is, bulbouts just down to that point, not moving?
Just those two intersections.
Sure, let's make that a next vote. What do you think?
That's important.
'Cause I'm sensing differences here, but nobody's voicing it. And that's where I'm confused. So I wanna make sure this is very clear.
Okay.
And you're talking, and a straw poll, for me, you're also talking all four corners when we're talking these, or just two corners? And we're not talking-
Let's start at each intersection.
So Main Street.
Main Street, I could go-
Two corners or four. I can go either one.
So clarification for me, those bulbouts with the planners in them would be pro-
Let's take it one at a time.
City, but on land, it would not have to be-
In our street right-of-way, that we would maintain, yeah. I would prefer four corners, if, if we could.
Okay, bulbouts with four corners down here. Okay, four corners. Okay, now, second item on the bulbouts. Bulbouts with just concrete? Or a stamped treatment or paver treatment? Or a stamped treatment or paver treatment, do we need the stamped or paver treatment if there is a raised little planter box? If it's plain, if it was just a plain bulbout, would you want the treatment to be pavers or a stamped design? Or, or basic concrete?
I go for planters or stamped.
Okay, so one or the other, not both?
No, not both.
Okay, so we could do plain concrete with.
Randy's pointing about pavers as opposed to stamped, I think.
Okay, but if we have a raised little planter, then we can do basic concrete. That, Daryl, or stamped as well.
I understand what you said, there's still going to be some area
Around it.
Around the planter strip or planter boxes.
You'd like stamped.
I like stamped or.
Paver, okay. Straw pole, Daryl.
My concern about the stamped is the, what it looks like ten years from now, so if it's a fading effect, I'm concerned about that. And pavers' cost and.
You get weeds between them.
And weeds and potential tripping hazard because they move, so I'd probably lean towards just concrete with the planter.
Okay, Randy.
Um, I like the pavers, and then, um, I only want the raised, raised in certain ones, but so if we're just talking Main Street.
Not a raised and all, all, not, how many raised planter box?
On Main Street and Center Street.
All four.
A couple at least, yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed, yes, and those raised pavers and those kind of entry-type things, though I will speak out and say I do like the zero-scape look on some of the other ones as well. And yes, and with Daryl, if you do that concrete, if you do colored stamped concrete, it's got to be done correctly. Actually, anything we're doing here has to be done correctly.
All right, straw pole done on that, is there another item, straw pole, what do you want?
So I, I need some clarification, so one thing, if we add these planter boxes, I don't know what the ones in Lehigh are. We're going to have to make sure they're not getting run over by cars that had cut the, cut the corner, so these bulbouts are a traffic calming device as well as safety, and they are made from personal experience, you catch your back tire on them periodically um, if you cut the corner, so we would need to make sure that we design.
The bulbouts are, the planter boxes are set back somewhat, they're not on the edge.
We don't want to have them, be replacing those on a regular basis if we put those in there, so can I hear what the decision was on the straw pole? Because I got like lots of straw pole, but I, um, either wasn't paying attention or did not hear the decision then at Main Street.
Bulbouts was unanimous.
What the results of the straw pole is what you want.
Yes, thank you.
Bulbouts was unanimous.
So bulbouts, so we're just talking Main Street?
Main and Center.
And, well, we all, everything's along Center Street, so we're going to say this is going to be at the cross-intersecting street, at Main Street, all four corners, stamped. Not stamped concrete. Pavers.
Pavers, that's what I heard.
With planters.
Correct.
Or, or just a couple?
Maybe we should start raising our hands so that.
Raise your hand, be clear.
So that no one knows what we're saying, huh?
I could do either or, I, on the planters.
Oh, sure, I can try.
I think we have just the west side being planters.
I, I'm going to try to simplify this really fast, with, with all of the intersections where we will have bulbouts from State to the temple, who's in favor of bulbouts on all four corners of those intersections, raise your hand.
From State to the temple.
From State to the temple, on the intersections that we will have bulbouts, on the intersections that will have bulbouts.
Which is two intersections, we're talking about.
Are you talking four-way intersections, because there are also thing, there are also T-intersections, so.
If you go to your map, the full seven twenty-five.
So you will see there's Main Street, there's one hundred east, two hundred east, so when I was putting together my estimates, so you know, we were looking at Main Street, two hundred east, four hundred east, and. And I'm looking, and I think that's pretty much, and maybe a bulbout here has it kind of next down anyway.
So, what I was suggesting. Nearly the same as Fourth does.
Five hundred already has them, so.
So, so in, along that whole corridor, do you want, raise your hand if you want all four corners to have bulbouts.
Okay, but which intersections?
We just mapped it out.
All those intersections or less than?
So hold on, so. Four-way intersections, you only have Main, Second, and Fourth.
Main, Second, and Fourth.
Well, if you're four.
In the schoolroom.
I'd say yes on most.
But not five, not Fifth East, not where Rocky Mountain is.
There actually are two.
There are two there already at Fifth East, as we talked about with the tree.
We're still wondering what to do with the Hill House.
So there.
On a, on a T-intersection, if you want us to at the school area, so like on one hundred east, we can have those on the south side, those two bulbouts.
Is that a bulbout right there?
That's a bulbout there, and then there's also one on the other side.
It's already there.
It's shorter because we have that driveway.
These, these are.
This is an old area.
This is a grander bulbout than what we're showing you.
Yeah, our bulbouts will not be nearly as long as this one.
That was a yes, because there was more than three, so yes, you want all four intersection, or all four corners to have a bulbout.
At Main, two hundred east.
Okay, so, so on those, if we're assuming that all four of those corners on those multiple streets have bulbouts, and then a couple on the south side where there's a T-intersection, do you want a planter box on all four corners, raise your hand? So nobody wants a planter box on all four corners on any street?
I would say.
That's not what I'm hearing.
At Main?
Main, Main Street for sure.
Go back to the map, if you would say.
So how about, let's just start with Main and Second then, Main Street, all four corners have a planter box?
Raise your hands high.
Yes.
All right, let me note that. Thank you.
So then, let's go to Second East, all four corners have a planter box?
Hang on, let him get caught up, but I think we're there.
Okay, so that's a yes.
Two hundred east?
And some of those planter boxes, some of them could be ground level, some could be where it's just the eighteen inches up, but some sort of a plant treatment.
Well, that's, then that becomes a different issue, another element, so.
So Second East, let's, let's go to four hundred east, would be your next four-way.
Can we see the map?
To four to east.
We're getting pretty close to the, the.
Fourth east, then is our next big one, so all four corners have a bulbout, would you like planter boxes on any of those corners? How, how many, all four corners?
Would it need to be as high?
That's the.
So that's two only, so that.
Oh, hang, hang on, we were still discussing how the option was.
So would it be the same as Main Street and?
Main Street, Second, and Fourth, or bulbouts with the.
You mean in terms of planter boxes?
Height and majesty and would it be? Be less than what we've done on the other two, or the same?
Same treatment. For uniformity.
Let me, let me ask that again.
That's a high-traffic intersection.
So on four hundred east, we have four bulbouts, all four corners, would you like a raised planter box on all four corners, yes or no, yes?
Yeah, I can do that for sure.
So that's a three, yes, so that would be a planter box on all four of the corners on four hundred east.
So so far, Main, Second, and Fourth all look the same.
Yep.
Correct.
And keep in mind, there is a street light on one of those four corners on each of these spots. Okay, so then, our next one is down around seven twenty-five or Canal?
Yeah, let's see it.
Yeah, for some clarification, if I'm thinking correctly, maybe down to seven twenty-five, from Fourth to seven twenty-five, maybe pavers, but not.
See, that's what I'm saying, that we've got all these little, the nuances.
So, without planters, or are we looking, planters all the way down?
They're looking, that's what we've been voting on is planters.
On seven twenty-five east, if you're there already, I want to make a point there.
Yes, please do.
The road narrows already to match the same width as the road coming from the temple.
Correct.
It is narrow already.
It's narrow, like it'll be right here.
Right, so that's already narrow there.
It's thirty-four, so basically ten feet less than the rest of the street.
So the safe, the safe crossing walk across to school, it's on the east side of seven twenty-five, that would be already a narrow area that we want to reduce the, how fast you can go visually. But on the, uh, leg going east, turning southbound, we think we want to leave a straight, a straight-through lane going to, uh, towards Ninety East, and then leave that wider section so people can go have better access to, to the junior high school, and that also facilitates buses turning there.
Sure.
Uh, to make that, so I would recommend there, no, no bulbouts, and we'll just keep the extended width.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, that's a great point, any of these things, we're kind of just doing it from a budget standpoint, if it doesn't make sense, safety and topography and how things line up, we're, we're comfortable with those things to be adjusted, I am, I'll speak for myself.
It's paramount, huh, safety.
So we might have one or two other spots where we have a bulbout, do you want planter boxes in those to match?
I think we're just talking about these marquee, these marquee intersections.
If that is the case, and I don't want to get us off track, but as we go that, then I would say we don't do hanging flowers and only do banners as a way of compensating that we're putting, that, putting the horticulture into the planters versus hanging, and then I guess then we go to the, you know, we.
Somebody wanted to sponsor hanging baskets one year.
Yeah, so we'll go on to that, but I'm just saying, if I'm saying yes to those, then I'm saying no to the others.
Correct.
Just so you know that I'm.
Really, really quick, just for clarification, who's in favor of the eighteen streetlights then, raise your hand, yes?
Yes, streetlights are great.
We're moving on then, so then hanging baskets, you know.
Arms, purchasing the arms for the banner basket, okay, we're good.
So that it's an option for Hundred Year Celebration, for Grand Opening.
Let me take a straw poll, who wants a hanging basket on those now, yes?
A permanent hanging basket, I don't know that.
Okay, thank you.
Guess I should probably bring this up.
Don't.
No, I'm just saying, if this is an esplanade streetlight and we talked about putting it perpendicular to the light, are you okay with the banner arm coming out essentially looking just like the light, because I was thinking of it being more of the
Straight.
The Washington Post light, which is the straight up and having the arm come out, you'll have.
Aren't we considering the new lights that you presented tonight?
But that, that's.
So we're going new lights?
Yes.
Not esplanades.
I think we're leaning towards your suggestion tonight, Noah.
Even more better.
Yeah, more money savings, put it into beautification.
That's for you. Okay, so these will not be esplanades, I just need to change that then, so these will be. Okay, and that's going to bring that price down. Either way, we could start using those lights, even if they weren't the ones. So, yeah. Okay.
You're drooling over it?
Really quick, before you go down a little further, so the, the concrete flatwork around the planter box, is it, is it stamped and colored, or is it plain, that would be the next question, you're putting in a planter box on the bulbouts, is the concrete around it stamped and colored, or is it plain, stamped and colored, raise your hand.
I want pavers.
Yeah, I think, I think we all want pavers.
Pavers, or is that one of your options?
Nope.
Nope.
I have no idea.
Oh, like, it did say pavers, but.
Pavers are going to be a little bit more expensive than just stamped.
And that's the key, I think, a little bit more, I don't know if it's going to break the budget.
Not fifty percent more, right? Pavers can help create that visual, like Jeremy was saying of, if we.
But not in the street, you're not talking about.
No, but Randy was mentioning down the road, you can create that, you can make them part of this crosswalk, but as a traffic commutant if needed, but
That's true.
Just around there.
We're going to have to look at that design, I just want you to visualize, you've got to have your ADA ramp that's concrete, that's not pavers, right?
Right.
And then.
It's not even the concrete, it's the yellow ramp, right?
That's, that's part of that bulbout, can you go to a picture of those? By the time you put in a planter box and you have your concrete sidewalk, there's not very much room for those.
Trying to find a piece of one. Yeah.
And that's my point too, if it just doesn't work.
So, I mean, it would be similar to this, but you've got a planter box out on the corner or somewhere, is that what everybody's envisioning?
Yeah.
Like where that stamp is to the rear of that, um, that, in, in the area where the sign is?
I mean, the, the planter box realistically, if you're bringing it out on the corner, it's sitting right there, right?
Yeah.
Is that what everybody's?
As long as it's pretty.
Closer to the sidewalk than the curb.
Right. Guaranteed, these are going to get hit by a truck sometime, we have, we have street signs come down, we have street lights come down, just keep that in mind, they're going to get destroyed at some point, but we'll replace them, so. Okay, so all in favor of the pavers, yes, raise your hand, all right, I'll figure out what that costs. Uh, what's next here?
So that is going to be, no, no, I.
Whatever you need to get clarification, please take the time. Now are we on to the street profile, street profile itself?
So planter strips then, on the, they were just talking on the south.
I don't think a contiguous planter strip is necessary if we're beautifying the marquee corners necessarily, but what are your thoughts? Planner strip or not?
I'm probably a no.
Okay, no on a, on a contiguous planter.
The only reason I would say that is if you wanted to put trees in, but.
But then there's the pot, potential pop-out, where you just do an occasional pop-out square or rectangle with a tree and some zero-scape plantings.
I don't think I'm in favor of a pop-out, but.
Okay, so we're no on a contin, contiguous planter strip. Straw pole was no. Took a, yes, straw pole.
I'll pull it.
So a, a, a planter strip that's somewhat contiguous all the way down the road except for driveways, yes, raise your hand?
We're no on that.
What about a planter strip that's broken up periodically?
Just periodic pop-out.
Yes?
Tree spots.
Occasional pop-out, I'd be okay with that.
Could be.
Raise your hand if you're a yes.
I almost like it as, I liked having it in our toolbox for a place like Errol's that we don't want to take away from him, we find a tough spot, so we do, I don't know.
I'm always, I'm always in favor of anything that remedies a special situation.
It's just a lot of, a lot of maintenance and creates a challenge, you get the.
If it's not contiguous.
Exactly.
Contiguous, contiguous.
Thanks. And if we get a lot of bang for our buck in the main intersections, maybe that's where we.
Well, what I'm.
I'm glad someone had a little.
He can price it out. And he brings back to us reasons why it wouldn't be a good idea that we decide it wouldn't be, we can always take it out, but, you know, we can always take it out of budget.
Okay, do you want to see more information on that option, instead of, so no on a contiguous one, because of the, how it impacts residents and the cost?
So this is the example from Santa Clara, this is right in front of their city hall, this is.
Sorry, I'm just trying to pop it up there.
So this is a pop-out that's not contiguous, and really, they've used it, and you can see there's a couple others down, further down the street, they've just put them periodically as a traffic calming measure, because this is a really heavily trafficked roadway.
It's nice to have a tree.
My guess is this is probably like a six or eight times as much traffic as our Center Street has, and so, um.
Now that would.
That would be the periodic pop-outs with some sort of vegetation.
But it, that also, the, the street alignment is, is not the same, so it helps make it more even with the street or the, the, the line that's before that, yep, further back.
Let's look at a couple of the others where.
So this is Santa Clara that I was referring to right there.
Yeah, so this is a, a few spots where the street isn't jogging like that other spot.
I don't think, I think it's, it seems like it's overthought.
It's pretty, you like it, but.
In the zero-scape areas or something.
We could always add both.
These, this could be added at some future date.
Yes.
Because it doesn't change the curb gutter sidewalk, because they pulled it out so that the stormwater can still.
Can still traffic.
Except that we would want to get some kind of water to them.
Yeah, that's, that's the big thing, is whenever you do decide to add it, you have to.
The watering is, you have to tear stuff up.
They're cutting into the asphalt.
Yeah, you're wanting it too technical, too p, p, t, 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 to me, that, just a little isolated item, sort of looks out of place.
Yeah, that's right.
You have to think of the mechanisms.
They also don't have snowplows in Santa Clara.
Correct.
Ever, I mean, maybe in like an active garden, but it's pretty rare.
Our plows aren't doing the shoulder, they're doing the main right-of-way, aren't they?
Uh, they'll go first past the main roads, but then they'll come back on shoulders.
And then the sweeper, that gutter that is in between the two.
Never gets cleaned out.
Never gets cleaned, has to be all handwork, and then.
Okay.
The sweeper cannot get around, so you have to, I don't think.
Straw pole on that element, yes?
Yes, you want those?
Okay.
No, but.
If you need to pull one out.
There might be an occasional situation.
That's great, but, but let's not throw one in the plant.
Okay, so that's, so that's, takes care of all of.
So no planters, no trees within planters, let's discuss. So no planters, no trees within planters. Let's discuss trees. No trees then? I don't know where to put the trees, quite frankly, if we don't have a pop out or if we don't have a planter strip. People's yards?
That's the best answer is that.
Maybe we could ask if there's some residents that would want a, a tree.
Just today I saw a really cool thing that Orem City is incentivizing residents to plant trees and giving them a discount at certain nurseries.
That would be great.
Certainly look at something like that if they want to plant a tree, and we say it's gotta be in your front twenty feet of your lawn, in your front yard, something like that, and we.
And we could potentially present to residents who are open, uh, for example, uh, in, in my neighborhood, Eric Anthony, former council member, he convinced everybody on his street to allow him to plant a London plane tree. So their whole street has these beautiful mature, uh, London plane trees that are, you know, kind of uniform looking and.
It's with his expertise that those things survive, cause those are, having owned many of those, they, they struggle.
That species may not be the right species, but uh, what I'm saying is we could have discussions with residents who'd say sure, you know, if the city wanted to purchase a tree and have a particular species that's a repeating species that flowers the same and, you know, maybe create some beauty, we could have those convers- would, would we be open to those kinds of conversations versus creating our own bu- little.
No, yes, for sure, and we absolutely have to get input from the people this is impacting on the, on the streets. They've got to be able, and, and things as we've talked about, as we talk about streetlights, we talked before that if it's going in somebody's yard, they need to approve it, that it doesn't just show up.
Talking about our own right of way, city right of way.
Yes.
At this point, okay. So, trees could be a discussion with, engaging with the citizens potentially.
Would like what Adam was talking about though.
Since it would not be an our right of way. Okay.
So then the next section is, if you turn that to kind of look down the street, there you go, right there. So, on the north side, do you want planters? The last discussion was south side only. Do you want planters of some sort on the north side, yes or no?
Planters strips or planters?
No, planter bo- or planter strips, sorry, or a, or a new. Yes?
Nope.
Okay, that's a no. Let's go back to your spreadsheet, so I think that answers that whole section.
Pretty much it. Cause we looked at south side versus north side, so all this options are all off. None of this.
That's correct.
And north, same thing.
Correct.
So what we've ended up with, is there anything else?
That's it.
Okay. So what we've ended up with then is the new light at three hundred foot spacing. And.
Added the others, that's our base.
Main street, two hundred east and four hundred east, all four corners with pavers and planters.
That's correct.
Someone make a motion quick.
Well, what I would like to do is, is let's, if, if we get to a motion, then we'll, we'll come up with the design and make sure that you guys are comfortable with that and bring that concept to you. And then at that point, we're, we're approaching property owners and looking at how their right of way versus their property lines are impacted.
The overall width, yeah.
The, the overall width of our right of way is already established. It is a sixty-six foot right of way. It's been adopted on our master plan, we have a cross section, so that's not changing.
It's just how we impl- how we.
The only thing really that, that maybe the property owners with, on the corners, but again, that's being built in the street right of way. Uh, adding a street light, it would be in the right of way, we'd probably be in between property lines, right on both sides there, so we'd notify those homeowners and see if there's any concerns there, but.
Is there any way that you could hypothesize of what would be happening on a particular pro- um, property that would be heavily impacted, perhaps even one known as eighty-eight east, um, center street?
So on that specific property, um, I agree that that tree is in the way and the sidewalk and the pop out could impact that. And I think we can look in some of those and see if we can save some.
Exactly. We could have the sidewalk.
Yeah, I was gonna add, I was just gonna say, as we go into actual design on this, now that we have some idea of what we're doing, there are going to be trees or there are going to be sidewalk that isn't in the right spot, and we're gonna have to then kind of massage this as we go along, trying to save things. So this just gives us at least an idea of where to start from, and then it'll be tweaked a little bit.
The biggest, biggest thing is really what we found on the Heritage Trail on the north side, it really is the driveway tie-ins. And so because you're bringing in a, a raised curb and gutter, you're, you're elevating the point where their vehicle exits.
Sure.
And so, they may have a driveway that slopes from their garage all the way out to the asphalt. And now we're bringing in something higher than where that driveway ends. And so we have to chase it and raise the end of their driveway and they have a slope that goes backwards. So their driveway makes a very gradual V shape. That's the biggest impact that we found on the Heritage Trail is, is that was hard to explain and show how that impacts people's yards. But, so we're rebuilding a little portion of driveway to chase that slope, and then we're rebuilding any landscaping and irrigation to raise that up if it's out that far. Some areas like this one that's identified, um, it might just be unimproved roadway, and so it's an easier project. But tying in driveways really is, from what I recall on the Heritage Trail, the biggest obstacle.
I have confidence that we can tie in those driveways because we've already gone through this. We, we already know the, the challenge is that, and, and knowing most of the people along that personally, I think they handled it really well. Um, I, I, I know that we used an outside firm to take care of that and it worked, um, I think that those all worked through. It's just for me to make a motion and then say handing it off, not to say I don't have absolute confidence in our staff, but making sure that we are taking care of special situations like this without having to say it's a boom sixty-six. That sixty-six is just, um, the optimal, but it doesn't need to always be.
That's already established.
I understand that, but there's, there's narrowing that we've, when we went through this, when we opened Center Street, um, all those years ago, we had to make some considerations for both the property owners and the safety, and then we learned that narrowing did help with the traffic, um, safety issues. So just making sure that, I need to have confidence that our citizens are feeling that we are taking into consideration, even though it's not coming to us in- for individual properties, I need to feel confident that our citizens know that we are considering each property owner.
So, what I, what I might suggest then is, is to make a motion based on the selections that you've made tonight and let our engineers prepare the designs so that you can see exactly kind of how this lays out. We'll call them draft designs. Uh, we, my, my honestly, my biggest concern is that we're gonna have one or two property owners that says, take a hike. You're not doing this in front of my land, and then you have no improvements unless you want as a city council to condemn your land. That's my biggest concern.
And, and I understand that from that city point of view, but I feel like doing these extra steps says to the, to the, to the majority of the residents, this is how cautious and careful and thoughtful we are being in making sure we go forward. And if we have pushback from one or two or whatever, three dozen, I don't know, hopefully not, you know, that, that we know that we've done as much as we can, or not maybe, we've, we've done a sufficient amount to be accommodating if possible, and we'll go through, you know, across that, that barrier when we reach it, but.
So, so let us prepare the plan, take a motion tonight or have a motion would be my hope, so that we have some firm direction.
Sure.
On what to prepare, let us see how that impacts all these property owners, and then we can bring that back to you with kind of those final, final draft designs. Is that fair, Noah, Trent, is that okay?
Right, this is not, this can still be somewhat fluid based on different situations and those conversations that we'll, we'll engage the property owners into, and if there's a, a tree or a certain circumstance that we need to meander the sidewalk as it's been accommodated before in a couple spots, I think that's the, that's the goal, so.
Help me to understand though, that why would we need a motion? Uh, I mean, could we not just make the recommendations? I mean, what does a, what does a resolution or?
Cause we asked to be involved.
Or a motion do?
A motion says that you voted on it, otherwise there's no vote.
Well, I, I understand that, but.
So that you can come back in six months and say, I didn't vote for that, that's my concern.
No, I'm asking, I'm sincerely asking, I, I, it doesn't make any difference to me, but what I understand this to be was just asking for guidance and direction.
This is appropriating money towards a project.
Then we bring it back and then we vote on it. That, that's kind of what I had in mind, but.
I think what, what, what we are giving staff direction on tonight is the matrix of specific beautification elements that we just discussed, that we, that council agrees that those are expenses that they think are, are good and advantageous for the community in those specific locations, so that when a plan is presented to the public, there is at least an overall plan and approach. It's not just, you know, shotgun-like, you know, disorganized, so let's, let's present something organized. And then I think what I'm hearing from staff is, yes, there's gonna be some individual circumstances. As far as the road profile, the road profile is not being decided tonight a hundred percent in every situation. Is that fair to say, Adam? As far as if there's an individual property owners.
They're, they're ma- the.
Issues.
I want to make sure our terminology is correct. The profile is a sixty-six foot width road right of way. What you might be adjusting is.
That can adjust.
Some of that placement of curb and gutter on the pop outs. That's, that's really the only thing you're adjusting.
So question, on that sixty-six foot, what property owners would have a right to say, I don't want you to do this on my property? Do we know specifically?
So this map is the one I, and I don't believe, Daryl, you were on the council, let me brought this before. So this, what this shows here are the properties that extend out past the right of way line, and there are just a handful, and two of them are here tonight.
Not insignificant, he should make a lot of money.
We, we anticipate that all these property owners will donate the property, um, because they're getting great improvements.
You don't have to pay for the sidewalk curb and gutter.
There's some truth in that.
That really would be our first approach.
And put a banner up on our new streetlights for your, with your picture on it.
And as far as this property here, we were talking about this width being wider, I think, and I cannot remember, it's been a while since I prepared kind of very rough design, we would probably be tearing out, potentially tearing out that concrete and moving it narrower to where it should be, because it's a little wider. But, like, I won't commit to that right now, cause I haven't got, but I think the next step, if we can get a motion, would be then to cut us loose. We come back with a horizontal design, so I'm not necessarily looking at drainage and everything, but we come back and say, with what you told us to do, here's what that would look like, and here would be the ramifications as far as property, that kind of stuff. And then if we, or if you like that, then we can then move into full design and, uh, figure out how this works vertically and ties into people's yards. That, that's the kind of the ugliness of it, but.
So, so your, your concern is that after all this discussion, we've taken the straw polls, we come back in three, four, five, six months and someone says, no, that's not what I agreed on. After these guys have done all their design and all due diligence.
You're trying to narrow the scope of what we're, our choices, and so you're saying, I'm, we've committed to this portion, these choices and this portion of the decisions.
Yeah, that's fair. Doesn't mean you can't change it, but it's gonna save us a lot of work and effort if.
Makes sense.
If we weren't clear on.
Focus, we need to start to focus in.
So, so Daryl, for your, your question, the, the red ones are identified, maybe just zoom out so you can kind of see.
Yeah, you can see there's just a handful, and they're really, other than the Royal Anses here on the corner, which if we do a bulb out, maybe that doesn't even matter on Fourth East, but the rest of them are all essentially.
The line is where it needs to be.
They're just a full, and it's all in this couple of blocks here.
So the big tree that's up by the temple, that, that huge tree, is that in our right of way?
Those are significant, yeah.
They are, and, but they are already out within the city right of way. They don't actually own that property.
Go further over, but they have improvements that will be impacted.
Yeah.
So, so just because they're not red, doesn't mean that the property owners aren't impacted. Every.
Right.
Driveway is going to be impacted with this, wherever there's not current curb gutter sidewalk.
True.
If there's already existing improvements, I don't think we're doing anything to those properties from the sounds of it, except for on the corners.
Okay.
Maybe a street light.
Right, yeah.
Can I, can I make one more recommendation, sorry? But couldn't you design this bulb out and give option A and option B and have one more meeting where you actually, instead of designing the whole thing going, oh, I didn't want that, you could then go block by block and go, here are the two options. Do we apply it all four corners? Basically what you just did, but with better visuals.
We'll, we'll bring those concept designs to you, and before we go out to bid and make sure that you're comfortable with what those pop outs look like.
I think we'd just like to see a maximum, in other words, if we do everything that we'd like to do here, you know, how much are we looking at, rough and tough? And then we have the option to stay them back if we want to.
Like we did with, with quite a bit by not doing trees or planter strips and changing the lights.
So just for clarifications before a motion then, this cost estimate's at two point one seven nine million.
Seven hundred grand less than what we were last time.
We were shaving it down already.
Mayor, are you for a motion?
I am.
I would like to move that we, um, approve the, uh.
Draft.
The drafts, uh, of two point one seven nine million.
So, I don't feel comfortable with this amount, because we have added four corners and things, so that number is not a good number. I would prefer if you make a motion to cut us loose on these options and then we can come together.
Why don't we call it a concept instead of a draft, okay?
That we approve of the concept planned, uh, created tonight by the council by mutual agreement and straw poll or whatever. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Mike Van Cherry, seconded by Daryl Magalby, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you for getting through that. Thank you for your patience, everyone here. All right. Okay, we will move forward then. We now have another review and action item. This is a memorandum of understanding, uh, so between, uh, Mike Miller and to potentially begin negotiations of a potential development agreement on seven hundred north.
I'm gonna handle this one tonight. Again, this is just a, a simple memorandum that's authorizing, it's similar to what we were doing before. Hey, we want to make sure that you guys are comfortable with the city staff spending time and resources to negotiate a potential, um, development agreement with Mr. Miller and, um, the, his vertical development company. Um, again, you know, if you look at the memorandum of understanding, I think it's pretty clear that we're, um, we're not committing to anything that, that both parties expressly acknowledge, that this does not create a vested right to develop the property in a certain way, and that no rights will vest until we get the final approval on a development agreement. But this does obligate us to go in and negotiate in, in good faith. Um, and, and so there is, th- this is a step that moves us towards this development. Um, and so if, if some of you don't feel good about this at all, maybe we don't enter this agreement at this point. But if you feel the general concept that he, that has been presented works, then, then this memorandum of understanding would be a, you know, the starting point for getting down and, and negotiating. What we anticipate is we'll kind of follow a similar pattern that we did for Anderson Farms, where we will, we'll get down to the nitty gritty. We'll understand exactly what we're looking at, what we're going to require, what he's going to promise to bring, and we'll form that in and we'll create a special zone for this development area. So that's what we're anticipating.
You, and Lyndon, we've had several instances where developers have taken us down the road, we've gone down that road, we've decided to back out, and they've threatened to sue.
Right.
And then we've had to agree to.
Yeah, after, after we've changed ordinances and adopted ordinances, we've had those circumstances. This, this instance and why we're going with this approach with a development agreement is so that we, when we come back and approve a development, we really have a, a solid understanding of what, what we're approving. And that's why we want to do it through the development agreement process.
So in your opinion, we were a lot, we were doing zone changes prior to really scoping out the details.
Yeah, yeah, we passed those ordinances and we set densities and we, and then the applications came in with the densities and, and that's where we got into things kind of sideways.
That, that did not happen on Ivory's development though.
No, it did not.
I was thinking the other.
That was like in two thousand six or seven with Fieldstone.
Fieldstone, right.
Yeah.
So this would hopefully avoid that, because it would create clarity before zone changes are made and whatnot.
Well, a little bit with the Elwood one, right? Wasn't there some threat, threats of litigation?
Right.
Prior to decisions being made, based on how far down the road.
Yeah, we, we, we changed one ordinance, but it still required a zone change application and, exactly.
Okay.
Any questions on this? It's, it's really pretty basic right now.
And we do have some here that are representing, this is the property owners here, welcome. Okay, so if there's any particular questions council has, I guess, is there anyone here representing Miller's? Okay, so if there's any particular questions council has, I guess, is there anyone here representing Miller's vertical development? Okay.
How you guys doing? Hey, Mike had promised me a residential number, a site plan. I haven't seen that yet, it's not part of our, our packet. Where, where are we at on that?
There has been some numbers that have been sent out, but in conversation, I think that it is a direct correlation to how much commercial you're going to have. You go up, and depending upon if you've got 1,200-foot units versus 1,500 versus 1,800. I think the max number that he's looking at is maximum 270. So what I would propose is that the number is 270 or less. It couldn't exceed 270. So I think if, if you look at it, that number, that maybe gets us to a starting point to see what that number is, because he can't get there. He's spent about 200,000 right now in investment trying to get this to work. And for whatever reason, we haven't been able to get there exactly. But there have been numbers that he's thrown out based upon whatever the commercial is that we can get in the bottom, it's going to directly proportionally lay out to the top. And you could say, could be less than, and if that gets you to a comfort zone, then that's what I would say we proceed with.
And Jake, I'll just say that I, I don't have the, those specific conversations, that information. Mike has been in discussions with Mike. They've been discussing a few things, but we really wanted to get this direction from staff, if we wanted to, excuse me, from council, if staff wanted to expend that time. So I know he's anxious to sit down and start discussing the details, but we want to get this agreement in place.
I know in a preliminary concept meeting, where a couple council members were able to be there with Mike, 270 was the starting point, but then it was discussed, like, let's not make single-car garage. Townhomes in the back, we're going to do two-car, make those a little bigger. So the number he was floating out there was closer to 220, and I think that made some of the council members feel a lot more comfortable, so. The number is something that I think, I've mentioned this before, the council's going to want to hear a specific target, or at least a target that's not quite as wide of a plus or minus. So obviously, we're not stating that now in the MOU. The MOU would, that'd be part of the discovery with the MOU.
That, that, yeah, we'd, when we go through the process and get that final development agreement in, we would have that number locked in, honestly, is what I would anticipate.
Yeah, 240 was the number that was thrown out at the DRC meeting we had.
Okay, that you sat in, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, so 240.
So just as a reminder, so this came before the DRC. We had, had Mike at one, and then Jake and Van and the mayor at one of those meetings. And then it's come before you as a council, just once before as a concept review. It has not been presented to the planning commission yet. Mike has shown the concept review to them, but it was not an agenda item. So that's where we're at. The only application that they've submitted is for this agreements and other contract documents. We have a $500 application that's required. So, so the preparation of this agreement and then presenting it here tonight is what that application fee is covering. They have not submitted any other applications at this point.
And in my conversations with, with the Realtor, one of the, Mr. Koutlay, Koutli, is the hope would be that through this development exploration under the MOU, that whatever elements architecturally, the council would like to make sure there's clarification on what the look and feel of the product would be, maybe versus what has been seen by previous examples within vertical developments' history, so that there's, that can be clearly defined. And he's indicated he would like to elevate perhaps what was shown before, but this would help give council the ability to dictate or collaborate, let's say collaborate, not dictate, but collaborate, that it gets aligned with the vision.
Right.
So.
I know there's been discussions amongst the council of making this the end-all for residential on that corridor. Could we get an update on the, I understand there's an offer on the other side, and that there may be an ask for residential as well-
Correct.
With some, with them actually bringing a significant amount of commercial in, correct?
Yeah, so, so we met with an individual, it's with Evergreen Development. They have signed contracts to put the property under contract with the Anderson family.
The entire-
The entire south side of the roadway. Yeah, that's not already sold. And so they, Evergreens, on their website, it looks like they're primary, primarily a commercial and office developer, but they do have a housing arm that they sent their housing guy to come talk to Mike and I here just a couple weeks ago. And so they are interested in housing units as part of their development, but we don't have any idea yet what that would be. They have, I think it was a six or eight-month due diligence period, so they've got time to come up with some site plans. So what this individual told us is that they would have some concept plans and things that they would provide to the city soon, but beyond that, I don't know.
I think we're always going to need to reuse residential as a carrot to bring in commercial. What's hard on this one is that it's not bringing in a lot of commercial. It is a residential project. And I agree that it will help to bring in more, it will create momentum, it'll create, you know, it'll, that critical mass you need to, to get a lot of people in. But this is, this project's not bringing in much commercial.
Well, I think to be fair, I think with, speaking for the other side, and I'm not taking sides, but I think what their answer to that is you need to look at the other parcels that are cooperating along that whole north side are pure commercial with, with the, the gymnasium operator and then, you know, some of the other. So this is the one ask for residential out of that contiguous north end. So the other parcels already spoken for will not have residential. So I saw-
Right now, personal opinion, I would not bind yourself to no residential on that south side. You might have a fantastic project that you're-
I feel the same way.
I would just, look, this is an application before you tonight just for that north side. It's way out true that.
Right, and that's, that's still a ways out. So I think we need to be fair to this applicant and how far they've come down, and the property owners and the Realtors who have, you know, have been working together to, to coalesce some, some good users and a good mix here for us, and just look at that.
Just as an FYI, since you asked, so it's this EVGRE.com. This is the company that's under contract on the south side, Evergreen.
EV.
EVGRE.com. And just some stuff on their website.
Excuse me, we do have a number of commercial applicants that we've talked to that are very interested in coming to that area. So we could, we had over 20 applicants to come into that commercial area. So I, you know, um-
Specific site or, or the surrounding, okay.
Our site.
In order to accommodate that vision of the Santana Row, you're saying that those are the people, you've had these, this interest to fulfill the, the dream of that.
And those are not ones that we just brought out and saw their name on the website. We've actually had conversations and interested dialogue with them, saying we're very interested. All they've got to have is an agreement that we can get and deliver the space to them.
I know I'm going to be a broken record here, and this is not the time or place to go into any depth, but with a, with a development that size, to, to say we're going to cap it at 270 and not consider anything on that south side. I mean, in my mind, 270, 500 even, if you look at the scope and size of the project, and you look at the potential income level, as well as the quality and price points on those projects, on the housing, which you know we're going to require. I, again, not appropriate to discuss in any detail now, but I'm, I'm definitely not for just putting our foot down and saying no on residential. If we don't get exactly what we want for commercial, then we're not going to allow residential. I think we need to be a little bit more, see how things shake out, I guess, is what I'm suggesting. Just my opinion.
All right, could you kind of share with us then, this MOU, the purpose of it is just to kind of-
It, it's, it's a direction to staff to saying, "Okay, we're interested enough to take the time to look into and to negotiate a development agreement, which will tie down all of these details." And so again, it does not vest any development rights. It doesn't require us, if we can't come to an agreement as to what's the appropriate level of commercial versus residential, if we can't come to an agreement on the appropriate site development, then we're under no obligation to, to grant that final approval of that development agreement. And, and, and the same token, they're not giving up any rights to, to submit an application to develop under the current zoning. If they, if they had a, you know, somebody come in and says, "Hey, I just want the whole thing, and I'm going to develop it all commercial", or, or under a way that would meet our current zoning, they, they're under no obligation to continue on either. But it's just an understanding that we're going to sit down and we're going to get serious about talking about what could go in here and what the city would feel good about approving.
Randy, I had someone make a comment to me today that, you know, it's important for our council that it's not all for rent, and, and Mike has committed to us, "Hey, no, there'll be some units to buy". The comment made to me was, "Yes, they'll have some units to buy, but Mike always has a set group of investors that are lined up to buy them and will immediately rent them", that really what we're getting is a rental-only type of project. Can you speak to his other projects? Has that been the case? Does he have people lined up, just investment groups that are going to take those? And so essentially, they become rentals anyways? Do you think there is actually opportunities for homeownership?
There will definitely be opportunities for homeownership. And all I can say is that as part of the development agreement going forward, is as you build that from exhibit A to B to C, as it moves on, and there's an agreement and consensus as you move through that process, that you may start out with eight pages of documents for a development agreement, and then it's going to end up being 60 or 70. And you totally have control over every phase of that. That you make a request and agree upon a particular criteria, and it's his job to fulfill and honor that criteria.
I don't know that we can legislate who we can sell to, though.
There, there are certain restrictions you can put on rentals.
Percentages.
Percentages, but, but that would, that would be something that we would have to look into, and, and I would assume there would be an HOA associated with this, and we'd make those part of the CCNRs. And, and so there are some ways that we can restrict how many units they can rent. That, that, you know, the certain percentage have to be owner-occupied, certain percentage can be rented.
I think the one thing that you'll be able to gain, and could leverage you more with what's going to happen on the south with Evergreen, is with what we're doing on the north, in the totality of the 37 acres we've got, is what is giving them some impetus to go in and get involved in that. Now we do the overpass between the two. Now you create the synergy between both properties. And I think that you end up getting exactly what you all have been striving for, and that is to create a corridor of commercial. And I think the key thing, if you look at internationally and nationally, what's going on, I'm a member of ICSC, and so if you look at what's going on in there and the projects, I'd be happy to send you a bunch of reports that are out there, that the ones that are doing well are places that have even taken shopping centers out. And what they're doing is they're putting multifamily on top, whether it be condos, whether it be apartments, and then the commercial on the bottom. And the key thing is that they create a synergy and a, a reason for those people to go there. And I think the idea of what they're doing successfully is creating some boutique shops that make the people want to stay there and hang out. It isn't a matter that you, you, the ones that are successful, they don't need another McDonald's. They don't need another Burger King. You don't need those businesses. But ultimately, the secret sauce that makes these great, whether it be Centercell, one of the ones that are, that are happening, are they create a energy around the whole area to get people to come in and stay. And ultimately, spend money and give it back to the city.
No, it's not part of this agreement, but I'd just like to state what my opinion is, is you maybe go forward, and I've, I've said a little bit about this before, but some of my, my points, my pinch points are the ownership levels. It's a huge thing for me to make sure we offer as much ownership as possible. And, and whatever limitations we legally have is what I'd like to see, the highest amount of ability to have ownership. On top of that, more so than the number of units is extremely important to me, but more so than the number of units is the type of units they are. So if it's more up versus the freestanding buildings or freestanding units at the back on the north side, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm more amenable to going up into the condo type, that I could maybe raise the numbers there versus the townhomes.
And that's the reason they brought in the brownstones-
Correct.
And discussed as you guys requested, two-car garages and those kind of things-
Right.
To be able to support that thinking.
Right, and so as somebody who's actually walked those streets, or walked, walked the pavement there in Santana Row, it's a beautiful environment, it's got the depth of architecture that I like, the heaviness, and I would say making sure that a lot, what, what you've, what has been presented is what comes to us. It's not just what is already in their portfolio, but it is very much in line with this dream that has been, or this vision that's been brought to us. So that's the compatibility of those two being aligned is very important to me. So number of units, yes, important, but more so the type of units for me. And so I know that doesn't have any part of this agreement, but as we go forward, you just know that this is where this one council member finds importance.
And I agree 100% because that kind of thinking, I think, gets us to the end goal, because it isn't a, a number game specifically. It's about the overall concept and the product that they're able to deliver that gets you that feel. I just barely got back from San Luis Obispo-
Okay.
And was blown away, and then just impressed, like, amazing. Town of 45,000 people, and if you look at what they've done in creating areas where you can live, you can operate businesses, the greenery, the, the, just the energy that is created around there. All of the older homes were immaculate. I, I was just so impressed with what they've created. Thursday night, they've got Farmer's Market closed down the street. Everybody is there. I mean, it's just, the energy was just phenomenal.
Community.
You know, and I think that that same kind of energy and excitement can be transferred to this project.
I want to be excited for the residents, but I also want to be even more excited for other residents to be able to use and enjoy that facility like any of us, so.
Speaking to what Randy just said, he gave us a couple examples of what- Speaking to what Randy just said, he gave us a couple examples of what he's done in the past, his portfolio versus the video we saw, and it seems like there's a little bit of a disconnect there, in my opinion, and Randy's as well.
Lot of disconnects.
I, I, I mean, looking at his portfolio, is there a disconnect in that he's saying he's going to provide this, and I, I think he provided those links to us, saying, this is what I've done, this is on the same par as that video. You know, is there something within his portfolio that you think closely compares to what he's trying to provide? Or is it something that's above and beyond?
I think this is above and beyond from what he's done as far as a full-scale deal. But I guess, and maybe this relates to this, maybe it doesn't, it's like saying Maggill Bees that, that do amazing homes and stuff, they couldn't build a home that would be a modern-type home because that's not really in their portfolio.
Development set.
And, and yet, it's like, if you get the right designers and you get the right architects, and together, and I think that's where, this is not just Mike Miller's deal. This is ultimately what we, as a group, my input from being in retail for 40 years, everybody here, your input in places you've been, to be able to add to make it better. And I think ultimately, if we all do that, the product that, he can deliver the product, we can deliver the commercial, and ultimately, his view of, and input of what's looking to go on the west that has been shown to him, he's like, no, that doesn't work because architecturally, that doesn't tie in, this has got to be changed. His vision is pretty amazing to sit in, in a room with him and see what his vision is, and, you know, everybody is not going, I mean, there isn't one group from CenterCal to anybody that is out there that has created these, that started the very first one, it was a process moving forward.
I get that, yeah. All right, any other questions, council? This is an action item. Does anyone feel comfortable with entering into the memorandum of understanding to entertain a motion, or need further discussion?
Guess I'm grateful that we're attempting to get into this situation that prevents us from getting in a place where we have to go, that's not what we thought, you know, and so that we don't have egg on our face, that we don't waste everybody's time, whether all the, everything has been put out there the way that we're all comfortable. I'm not here to say that, but I'm grateful that we have this as a tool to be able to protect everybody involved as much as we can see in, into the future, so.
Do you feel like this is a protection? If we go down the road and say no-
That's my question.
Is this, I think this makes it look worse. I think we are setting us up for one of these fair, or, not fair field, but whatever, who is that builder, other-
Fieldstone.
One of these Fieldstone-type lawsuits, if-
That's my concern.
If, if we're going, does this bring us closer to a lawsuit or further away?
I think this, this takes us further away because each party is expressly acknowledging. Because we're Fieldstone, where all of those lawsuits were coming, it was all about vested rights and what's called zoning estoppel. Promises were made, representations were made, but we expressly stated here that we are not making any representations, that we are not entertaining, we're not going to go meeting after meeting after meeting, and create an expectation-
And then capriciously say, oh, that doesn't-
And we're done, until, you know, there is no vested right, there is no development right until the development agreement is signed. And if Mr. Miller and, and his development group are willing to sign that document that states that so expressly, I think it does protect us-
Okay.
From, from a suit. If we were, if we were just to say, well, just meet with him some more, and, but again, it's, it's about representations, and these representations are very clear that we're not promising anything, except our time to see if we can come to an agreement.
Okay. You know, from my standpoint, I think Mike's impressive, he really is. I've, I've met with him, and, and I have confidence in him, and I really hope he'll deliver on what he said. I can say that from his previous portfolio, those aren't what we're looking for here, and I am waiting still for that residential number, knowing that 270 still for me seems really high, keeping in mind that, you know, Adam and I have a conversation, 20 years ago, they decided to put this road in, the debt that went in, we've turned how many residential developers away, and, and what makes Mike Miller different? Well, I, I think there is something different to it, there's really something special and cool about it. But we've always said, bring the commercial with it, it's not, on its own, bringing much commercial. You know, it's not, it's not a CenterCal where we're saying, hey, we're going to throw in these as, as a carrot. This is a, I mean, it is a residential development at its heart, at its whole, and so with that said, you know, setting expectations, I'm not there yet, but, but, but there's enough there, Mike's impressed me enough that, that I hope we can get, get somewhere where it, where it makes sense.
Yeah, and I would, I would just articulate that, Jake, I'm hearing a lot of, of concern about the, the ratio of, of commercial to residential. And, and if this project that's been presented, the concept plans that have come forward, if that's not what you're feeling comfortable about, I, you know, I would not encourage you to vote for, for this memorandum of understanding.
Yeah.
But if, if, you know, we're to the point where, like, going, okay, I guess I could understand and, and I can, I'm willing to think some more about it, then I don't think that memorandum of understanding exposes us to any liability to take some time to, to discuss different concepts.
Well, conversely, if, I'm still not decided, I like, I like what your suggestion, Jake, in some areas, but conversely, if I were Mike Miller, I don't know that, I'm, I'm sure what he's thinking is, sign the memorandum, which doesn't oblige you to anything or be to anything-
Right.
And then I'm willing to spend the time, the effort, and the money-
Yeah, absolutely.
To, to put, to put together plans that are concepts that we'll bring to you, knowing full well that those plans and concepts might not be adequate, they might not be what we're looking for, and knowing full well he's going to-
Right, if we say no, if we say no to this, then, then I think Mr. Miller needs to, to look for other properties, yeah.
I can understand why he wouldn't want to lay his cards out on the table right now until he knows he's got something in the hopper.
And to that point, I think it's very clear, I, I think those interested in this property and those on the other side signing this memorandum, understand where we're at, and that it's going to take that leap of understanding, of coming together, because this is now, we'll have to make some changes, and we can't go there unless we have that understanding. So I would say, don't sign it if you don't like how we're feeling about it, because we're not all on the same page, we have different variants of comfortable, of being comfortable here. So at any point, I'm willing to make a motion, Mayor, whenever you, you think it's okay.
All right, I would entertain a motion for the sake of time. I think, you know, I think what we're saying here is we're open to exploring a partnership concept here to entertain a zone change. We're not guaranteeing that that will occur. So if council feels comfortable with exploring that and seeing if we can get alignment on executables and deliverables for, on both sides.
Right.
Okay.
So I'll move to approve the memo of understanding, I'll add to, that you understand how we're feeling, the memo of understanding with Mike Miller as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Randy.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Mike Vancheri, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No as well.
Okay, we have three aye and two opposed, so the motion carries.
Okay, then that authorizes the mayor to sign that, doesn't obligate Mr. Miller to sign it, but, so.
And I would point out, there's lots of things I like there, and I, we've made good direction, but there's still, the things we've discussed here, I think we're still too far apart from me, and I want to make sure that it's very well-known and clear.
Great. Thank you.
All right. All right, item number 10, this is a review and action, public hearing for a recommendation to the Linden City Council to amend our accessory apartment map, and this is a public hearing.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
So moved by Jake and seconded by Van, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? No, that was unanimous. All right, we are now in a public hearing. Thank you, Mary, for presenting this.
All right, thanks so much, and I'll be, I'll be quick, I can go into more detail if needed, but it's fairly straightforward. So this is an ordinance amendment pertaining to the accessory apartment map in Linden City Code Section 1746100. This amendment was a request from some planning commissioners, planning commission did recommend approval of this ordinance amendment on April 12th. So accessory apartments are currently prohibited in the planned residential development overlay zone, shown here in Tilia Court and Songbird Cove. So this amendment is simply in response to the recently approved Songbird Cove residential projects and the 19 single-family homes. So it simply updates the map to, if you can see here, this red and black hatching, single-family homes where accessory apartments are excluded, it puts that on over top of the single-family homes in the Songbird Cove development. So Utah State Code does allow cities to exclude ADUs in 25% of their primarily residential zone areas and unlocks 6,000 square feet or less. So with the addition of these single-family homes within the Songbird residential phase, the percentage of viable residential area excluded from having accessory apartments increases from 6.3% to 6.36%. We're well within that 25% cushion. This, like I said, is just going to update the map to the ordinance, and will clearly show where accessory apartments are allowed and where they're, they are not allowed. Do you have any questions?
No, I think we, you know, it was discussed during the time that this was proposed, this change, I think it's great, love to hear any comment from the public.
Just an FYI, our, our name wasn't mentioned, but Ivory Homes did bring up in front of the legislature that a city in Utah County was prohibiting them from developing accessory apartments in their development, and he named enough specifics that I was texted during the conversation by the League of Cities and Towns, saying they are throwing Linden City under the bus. So with all of the discussion on accessory apartments, we just want you to be aware that we are a target because of, we are prohibiting accessory apartments with the 500-pound gorilla at the state legislature.
So do you think that we're facing possibility of litigation, or just legislature?
No, but you will continue to be the poster child for harming them and those residents that could live in accessory apartments.
Ivory and their, they're the wolf in the hen house, man. For them to be on those boards is absolutely inappropriate, in my opinion.
They're the largest home builder in the state of Utah, so when you-
Most to gain.
And a lot of influence.
A lot of money, most to gain, make a lot more money, the higher the, the density.
I just want to make you aware of that, that happened-
Appreciate that.
In this session, just-
And for the record, just for any of those that are listening or will be viewing, you know, the reason that this was identified was there were some significant density trades given to Ivory already in this community that were higher densities than we've ever entertained throughout the city. In their, it was a mixed-use residential, mixed residential product, and so there's a lot of multifamily density already entitled here, as well as where there are single-family, they also were given a, a narrower street scape, they were allowed to do way narrower side setbacks, and, and so they were able to maximize lots in those single-family already, and I think in, in the interest of congestion and, you know, what's already been provided, that was, that was why we came to the decision we did. And I just want to state for the record, Linden was a forerunner of accessory apartments decades ago. We, we basically practically-
In the late 90s.
Invented them. You know, we're one of the first cities to even have them legal fairly citywide, so I think we're well within reason. You know, the legislative bill allows a city to call out up to 25% of their city to exclude these when they feel it is appropriate to do so, and we are still falling far below 25%. So we still embrace ADUs and welcome them, and they are widely here in our community, so widely used, widely allowed.
And it was an express term of the development agreement that we entered with Ivory?
Correct, no, we'll say that on, I hope, there was an express term in the overall development agreement as well for the density trades that they received, among other-
Great points of discussion here.
So, we are doing our part for that middle gap in, in affordable housing.
Doing and did, right?
We, we-
Yes.
Yes.
All along.
All right, on to the next thing, Mary, thank you.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second, sorry. Okay, closed public hearing, motioned by Jake, seconded by Arm Russell.
Randy.
Okay, Randy, giving it to Randy, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion's, all right, carries, and to close the public hearing, now, this is an action item for updating the map. Any further discussion or questions about the map as proposed by staff and vetted by our planning commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion, I move to approve ordinance amendment 2022-4-0 as presented.
You, Van?
I'll second.
Seconded by Daryl Maggill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. Oh, took it out from under him. Okay, motion by Randy to adjourn, who's seconding it? Okay, seconded by Van, he's still going to be on the minutes in the motion. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.